Yes, yes, you're good.
Okay, and we have our city recorder is also online, correct?
Yes.
Well, I have six oh one, so we're going to go ahead and officially call this town hall meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. We really appreciate you being here and participating in our first town hall of 2022. We're going to discuss tonight the camping ordinance. Looks like we have our counselors online. I see Council President Bill Richardson. You see Counselor Gleason. Counselor Nordoff. And I believe we have Counselor Gaul and Counselor Gar Boden in present. So thank you all for being here. Mr. City Administrator, do you also have online quite a few staff tonight? Is that correct? Would you like to let me know who's all here?
Yes, we have, as you had mentioned, our city recorder Kaylee. We also have our fire chief Jim Brown. We also have our police chief Gary McCullough. We also have our finance director Jessica Terra. We also have our public works director Ralph Dunham.
Does that take that count, everybody?
Yes.
Great. And I see we have quite a few citizens that have joined us on the Zoom and they will all have an opportunity to speak later. And then, of course, we're also streaming this live on YouTube for other people who wanted to listen and did not sign up to speak. So we'll go ahead and just kind of have you walk us through the agenda here. After our introductions, I know you're going to go ahead and go over the town hall guidelines. So I'll let you go ahead and take it, take it from here.
All right, just making sure that our screens update. Make sure that they do so. Okay, that's introduction. So let me switch over.
And for those who have a split screen, they can see the individuals participating and then also the PowerPoint presentation that you're bringing up.
Okay, these are the established ground rules for city council meetings. These are not arbitrary. They're actually part of the council ordinance for rules of decorum for their meetings. So for tonight's meeting, each member of the public will be entitled to comment before the council for three minutes. And when you do so, if you would be so kind as to provide your name and your street address, this information is used to ensure that the minutes of the meeting are properly reflected for those who provide public comment. And it's also a reminder that members of the public are expected to follow the same rules of professionalism and decorum as required by the council itself. So that is why our city recorder is online and she actually controls the mute button. So we ask that you be respectful as the council will also be respectful back.
All right, thank you. And now we're going to go ahead and have you walk us through an overview of where we're at and how we got here and what the mandate is all about.
Thank you. All right, so this town hall meeting did not just occur overnight. These are discussions that go back as far as October of last year. It started with a piece of case law called Martin versus Boise. That 2018 decision by the US Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit was in response to a 2009 lawsuit by six homeless individuals against the city of Boise in Idaho. And it was regarding the city's anti-camping ordinance. You'll see over on the screen here, the Ninth Circuit. I'm going to refer to the Ninth Circuit a couple of times because this is the case law that affects all of these states. All right, I'm going to just double check to make sure that my screen updates. I'm not going to assume anything tonight. All right, so a little bit more on the Boise versus the Martin versus Boise case. We always refer to it as the Boise case. The court had ruled that enforcement of ordinances that prohibit sleeping or camping on public property against homeless individuals is unconstitutional when those individuals do not have a meaningful alternative such as a shelter space or a legal place to camp. So this was out of the Ninth Circuit. So all of the Western states are governed by this particular piece of case law. The case law was appealed to the Supreme Court, which allowed the decision to stand. Apologize, but my screen does not update, so I have to keep going back and updating it for you. So the case was, as I said, was appealed to Supreme Court, which allowed the decision to stand. So what that meant is that you could file a suit in local state or federal court, but the decision was going to be upheld. So your court case, for instance, let's say that we had a class action sued or all the residents got together, or let's say all the cities or the counties got together and sued. This has already been upheld by the Supreme Court, so that court case likely would be tossed out on those base merits. The case was settled last year and the city of Boise had to invest 1.335 million dollars in preventing homelessness in its city in 2021 alone. And a third, at least one third of which had to be committed to rehabilitating or creating additional overnight shelter space. After the case came down from the courts, the Oregon Legislature took action and decided to make it state law. So there was two pieces of legislation that came down from the state. House bills 3115 and 3124. I will say that these are unfunded mandates. And each bill has a very specific requirement of every city in every county in the state of Oregon. This is not just about North Bend. It's about every city and every county in the state. I'm going to go through and talk about each of these individually. And again, I apologize, my screen's going to flashback before as I sort of stop sharing and then reshare. All right, regarding Oregon House Bill 3115, it provides that local law regulating sitting, lying, sleeping, or keeping warm and dry outdoors on public property that's open to the public must be objectionably reasonable. Specifically as to time, place, and manner. What that means is that objectively reasonable is something that is not defined in the bill and most likely will be defined by the courts. And it creates a affirmative defense to charge violating such local law where the law is not objectively reasonable. What that means is that if a homeless individual decides that our ordinance is not objectively reasonable, they can file suit. All right. So I'm now hopefully, hopefully my screen will update. I'm being told my screen is updating. House Bill 3115 establishes a cause of action for a person experiencing homelessness to challenge the objective reasonable of such local law. What that means is that, again, they can file suit and the legislation authorizes the court to award attorney fees to the prevailing plaintiff in such suit in certain circumstances. And the reason I've highlighted award attorney fees is that means that lawyers will go ahead and most likely take these cases on contingency because if they know that they will win, they will be awarded attorney fees. And so North Bend, as does all other cities and counties, have until July 1st of next year to review and if necessary, update our ordinances and support intentional community conversations. So what you have tonight through this town hall with your city council is that community conversation so that we can better understand what we are facing and why the city is considering various options to address the law. Moreover, house, both house bills nullified entire sections of our existing code. So until we have new ordinances in place that are in line with both of these house bills, they're unenforceable. The companion to this is House Bill 3124. Let's see to make sure that it updates on the screen. Oh, there it is. Just takes a little while. I just don't want to talk and the public not see what I'm talking about. So I apologize for the little delay here. So the companion to 3115 is 3124. This is what wiped out some of our local law. For instance, local governments throughout Oregon are required to give at least 72 hours notice before we can actually clear out a homeless camper and their belongings. And this is on any public property. For instance, the area in front of your home that is not the sidewalk, it's not the street, but it's the right of way, the public right of way, usually where utilities are run, is considered public property and currently homeless can sleep there. We can't do anything under the current local ordinance because our ordinance used to be 24 hours. And now we have to update our ordinance so we have enforcement authorities and we put it in line with the state law, which is 72 hours. It requires that North Bend and all local governments collect valuables left at a campsite and we must store them for at least 30 days at a site within the same community for which they're collected. So for instance, if we gather up any valuables at a campsite, we're required to store them for 30 days and have them somewhere accessible in the city so that it can be reclaimed. And it defines personal property as any item that can reasonably be identified as belonging to an individual and that has apparent value or utility. Also in House Bill 3124, it requires unclaimed personal property at a camping site be given to a law enforcement, social service, outreach agency serving homeless individuals, a local agency official, or a person authorized to issue a citation for illegal camping. Unclaimed personal property has to be stored in that facility in the same community. So for instance, in North Bend, if we collect it, it's stored in North Bend. If the city were to enforce more restrictive measures, impacted homeless votes could sue the city. So let's recap the two ordinances before you. First, the Oregon Legislature has enacted a law that made camping legal on public property unless North Bend enacts regulations that are objectionably reasonable as to the time, place, and manner with regards to persons experiencing homelessness. The time would be what time of day? The place is where in North Bend can they actually camp, sleep, park their RVs? And the manner, which is part of the regulation. For instance, they can't have any open flames outside, say, an RV that's parked on the street. Public property is very large. It says any public lands, premises, buildings, including but not limited to any building used in connection with a transaction, a public business, or any lands, premises, or buildings owned or leased by the state or any political subdivision they're in. Political subdivisions are your counties, your cities, and your taxing districts. So just think of any political subdivision that has a governing board and those can be considered public lands. The question keeps coming up. All right. So you're saying that folks can camp just about anywhere on any street in North Bend or on my front lawn for that matter, and you can't do anything about it? The answer is yes and no. Right now, under the current situation, there is no ordinance dictating time, manner, and place. So right now, it's open fishing season, if you will. They have to follow the state law. And we have to update our ordinance to allow our local agencies and code enforcement to actually enforce those laws. If we were to select a single location or several locations and stipulate that those are the only locations in the city where sleeping on public land can be allowed, you would have to accommodate every person experiencing homelessness within the city limits. And so the question is, how many homeless are in North Bend? I believe we have online with us as part of the next agenda, Ms. Tara from the Deveraux Center. And I'm going to hand over the mic to her for about 10 minutes and she'll help answer that question, given the most recent time and place count that's occurred. So Ms. Tara, are you online with us tonight?
I am.
Welcome.
Thank you. So on the screen, you can see the services that the Deveraux Center provides. And we serve, well, today we had, I believe, 89 people walk through the doors of our facility. Any given month, we have 1,200 individuals or, sorry, 300 different individuals. For example, David might come once and Mayor
Inglekey.
Jen, Inglekey, sorry. Might come every day we're open, but they each only count as one single user. And then any given year, we have about 1,200 different people pass through our doorways. So we estimate very, very roughly the data from the point in time count that we just did last Wednesday isn't tabulated yet. But we anticipate that there's probably about 400 people isolated to the North Bend area. So providing shelter, emergency shelter for 400 people in North Bend is, quite frankly, staggering. When the only actual emergency shelter that we have is the South Coast Gospel Mission, and I believe they have 66 beds. And they're, of course, in Coos Bay, so that doesn't even help North Bend. But I want to give you a little bit of a snapshot about the people who access the Deveraux Center. And I realize that the people who access the Deveraux Center is is not the extent of people who are homeless. But before I do that, I want to tell you a quick, tiny little tidbit about me that many people don't know. And that is that 30 years ago, I was very opposed to helping people who were living outdoors. I'd had some very negative experiences and I wanted nothing to do with it. All of that changed. It's a long story. I won't bore you with that tonight. If you want to know, please reach out to me. I'm happy to share with you. So I'm saying that to let you know that I understand where a lot of people are at when they are frustrated or angry or hurt by things that have happened in their interactions with individuals who are homeless. So back to the picture of the Deveraux Center clients. I look at the Coos County jail roster every day. I have for several years. I'm waiting for someone who would like to have a data project from SWAC because I've kept those logs every day. And very few of my clients end up on those jail rosters. So one of the myths is that all homeless people are criminals or that all homeless people are sex offenders. Just like there are movie stars who are probably sex offenders, there are also movie stars who are upstanding citizens. I also hear quite frequently that people who are homeless were bussed here from out of the area. And since 2018, we have interviewed over 4,000 individuals who are homeless. And the vast majority of them have some tie to the Greater Bay Area. The one thing I will say about people being bussed here is that we do get some people coming up from Port Orford, Gold Beach, Brookings, looking for services. And you know, that's maybe, okay, I'll give you that one. If you want to call those people bust here, sure. Okay, I won't argue that. But to say that Portland and Salem, Eugene are shipping us their homeless people for the past two years, there has been absolutely phenomenally poor bus service except through CCAT. And until recently, you had to make a reservation in order to leave Coos County so that they could abide by COVID restrictions. So the fact that people are being bussed here en masse just isn't true. Most of our clients have strong family connections or they drove here from out of the area. Last year, several people had jobs in the fishing industry and then the crab season wasn't very crabby. Or maybe it was crabby. So that was another unfortunate circumstance that we hear often. Somebody comes here thinking they have a job and then it just doesn't work out for them. Thirty-nine percent of our of our population are females. And 40% of our clients are over the age of 50. That's startling. When I refreshed some of our numbers today, we have 60 clients out of 4,000 that we have interviewed that are over the age of of 80, eight zero. Who wants their 80-year-old grandmother or grandfather living out on the streets? It's happening. One of the stigmas that I hear a lot are, oh, they're just young people who want to live a transient life. Again, I don't see a lot of solid evidence to support that. And I also have people say, oh, well, they could lie to you. They don't have a reason to lie to us because they don't know why we're asking questions and why we're gathering this information. 4% of our clients are under the age of 18. And that number shifts and fluctuates because we didn't use to collect as much data on people who are under the age of 18, but we started to want to see how many people are trying to live their life outside in a car or in a tent and they have young children with them. It isn't against the law to be homeless and have children. You have to take care of them, of course, but it's not against the law. Another startling fact is that nearly 10% of our clients have a job. They're earning money. They just aren't earning enough money to pay the rent. Or they don't have first, last, and a deposit. Or they have some sort of eviction on their record. And landlords right now kind of have the upper hand because, you know, if you could rent to our upstanding mayor or someone who's living outdoors, who are you going to choose? Most landlords are going to choose the mayor every day than someone who's living out outdoors. And then mental health. Until I started working at the Deveraux Center, I thought that, yeah, mental health plays a little bit of a role in this. But I have come to see that probably more than 90% of our clients struggle with some level of mental health. And I'm not talking about, oh, I'm a little depressed and, you know, a quick trip to the doctor and some Zoloft or Lexapro will fix me. I'm talking about acute depression, anxiety, PTSD, or more acute mental health, schizophrenia, bipolar, you know, those types of things. So all of those play into the picture of of what makes up someone being homeless. Another thing that needs to be considered is the generational factor. I have several grandmas, moms, and children that come to our center that, you know, mom or grandma lost housing somehow, or she struggled with mental health. And then, you know, the kids and then the grandkids. And that's a systemic problem, not something that we're going to fix overnight. And then a tragic number is that 7% of our clients, and this is only in the past 18 months, because we didn't even track this, have been in the foster care system. That number is probably significantly greater, but we have only started tracking it recently. So 7% in the past 18 months of new clients who've come through our doors were involved in the foster care system. Again, a failure of our society in taking care of youth who, through no fault of their own, ended up struggling. So that's kind of a quick, by the numbers, of homelessness. Are another component to homelessness that I hear a lot, oh, they're all using drugs. Or they're all, excuse me, sorry. They're all just interested in living a footloose, fancy-free life and they don't want to be responsible. Again, sure, some of them do use drugs. If you had to sleep outdoors and had nowhere to be at night and you were a vulnerable woman, you would want to stay awake. And unbeknownst to me, six years ago, the way to do that is to use methamphetamines. I am not in any way, shape, or form condoning using methamphetamines. But I'm saying if you're a single woman and you're looking for a way to keep yourself safe at night, you're going to do something to stay awake so that you're not victimized. And then comes the whole question of which came first, the chicken or the egg? Are they homeless because they were using drugs or alcohol? Or were they using drugs and became homeless? Did I say that right? Anyway, you get the idea. Or were they using drugs and became homeless? Did I say that right? Anyway, you get the idea. It's it's a catch twenty-two. We're not going to be able to to figure that out. And quite frankly, that shouldn't be our concern. Our concern is, how can we bring? More immediate recovery to our area and how can we get inpatient treatment in Coos County? Because that's a barrier for a lot of our clients. Trying to get on a waiting list, keep track of them. All of those things take a play. In the whole scenario. And then at some point, I would love to chat with people about our project of Coal Bank Village that we have. On the south side of Coos Bay or the DMV. So far, that program is tremendously successful. And part of that is because we are providing case management that's required. People have a roof over their heads and a place to keep their possessions secure. They're able to find a job and and get skills that they need to get and keep jobs. By having some stability in their lives. So. Thank you very much. City Manager Mill Iron and Mayor Engelke for allowing me to help dispel some myths.
Thank you, Tara. Thank you for that information. And and you said that the based off of the point-of-time count that they do where people go out into the community. And try to assess how many people are not, do not have housing or underhoused. Did you say it's about four hundred in North Bend?
That's my own personal estimate. We haven't done a point-in-time count for two years. And we don't have the results yet from the point-in-time count that we just did last week. So that's that's my own estimate, partly from our data collection that we do internally. Partly based on numbers from previous years.
Okay, and Coos Bay was a little bit higher. The last time they had their point counts around six hundred or so?
Yeah, probably between six hundred and eight hundred, I would expect.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Tara, thank you. This has been very helpful. You know, I know that we have great partners. Operation Rebuild Hope is one of them. They're. They have twenty-one beds, emergency housing for veterans here in North Bend. And I know that your center also houses some here in North Bend. What are those numbers?
So that the location that we have in North Bend is a boarding house style facility. And it's not really considered emergency shelter. It's considered transitional shelter. So it would not be eligible towards your number of four hundred. And when I said that we had the sixty-six beds at the mission. I'm not minimizing the work that Patrick and Operation Rebuild Hope is doing. But it's the fact that you have to meet certain criteria. If, I mean, if you're not a veteran, then you're not eligible. For Operation Rebuild Hope's housing. So at this point, broad, you know, looking at that number of four hundred. Sure, you can reduce it by Patrick's twenty-two beds. That are emergency shelter and and then you have, you know, still well over four hundred and fifty.
Okay, thank you. And for those online as we go to transition. Know that the city of Coos Bay has already implemented their ordinance. It's been in place and effective, I believe, since September third. And then shortly, right before the Christmas, New Year's holiday. Coos County introduced and passed their ordinance. So those are two in place. North Bend has been speaking about its ordinance for some time. And during that process. We had an opportunity come before us, which the city councils in Coos Bay, North Bend embraced, along with the county. Which is the potential for a million-dollar, five-year strategic plan. And what that means is that there would be one million dollars of funding to bring together all of our stakeholders. In the county, in the community, to a single table and pay for creating that strategic plan. And putting in the baseline in order to address homelessness throughout our area. So moving forward, as part of this and sort of continuing the conversation. Is that. The city council recently had a work session. And they got the results of a homeless survey. There was just shy of a thousand individuals that responded to. That survey and that survey is on our city website, which is northbendoregon.us. But since we published that, we've been hearing from lots of our constituents. And so the council has asked that we go through some of these locations. That have been put for as options, potential options. To deal with their mandate, which is dictating the time, manner and place for camping in the city. One that has come up multiple times is the California Street Boat Launch. We have informed those that have contacted us about that location, that this was a project that was funded with Oregon State Marine Funds in twenty nineteen. And at that time, the mayor had signed with the council's authority a twenty-year agreement. Stipulating that the facility would not be utilized for anything other than a boat ramp. So although you see an open lot, a lot of times when it's not high fishery. The reason is, is because it has to remain a boat launch. And if we were to break the lease agreement. It's estimated that we would have to pay back the state two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Those stipulations are spelled out in the lease agreement and were confirmed recently with the Marine Board. Another location that has been discussed is our wastewater sewage treatment plant. This is if you were heading towards the airport, out towards the state police, all the way around to BLM. And then you were to look down over at the runway, you would actually see our wastewater sewage treatment there. There's actually, according to our Public Works Director, roughly two to three vehicle spaces there. That could be utilized without interfering with operations. And so to put that in perspective. Two weekends ago, I did a citywide drive-through. And there were twenty-three vehicles parked on the street that were being used by the homeless. That wastewater treatment plant is a secure site primarily because of the volume of liquid ammonia and other chemicals on site. And water and wastewater treatment facilities actually came under federal security guidelines shortly after the September eleventh attacks in twenty. Two thousand and one. So doesn't make it an ideal site to be able to locate homeless there. The DHS building parking lot north of the airport and also the airport Heights Dog Park are locations that have been recommended. Both properties are owned by the Coos County Airport District, which is currently engaged to two million dollar land clearing and tree removal project. Which will include fencing to keep the homeless off of its property. The airport has cited FAA restrictions for security, very much like the September eleventh wastewater treatment plant. They have certain security restrictions. And in discussions with the airport's executive director. They've clearly made sure that their intent is that no homeless are going to be welcomed onto their property. Again, they're a separate tax district and they are their own tax district. And therefore, anything that we regulate in the city would not regulate their property. The Pony Village West Parking Lot has been discussed. It's come up in several emails to the elected officials and staff. As you know, that mall is privately owned. The city did inquire about using or leasing its parking lots and had gotten a unequivocal no. They are working on being able to expand and recruit new businesses to the mall. Right now Harbor Freight is the most recent. Lease agreements were signed just last week. They've been advertising for some of their positions. So that is the next big box that's coming. And there are some other discussions. And those will be left to the mall to be able to break their own news. The vacant Baycrest Building on Sheridan. A lot of folks don't know about this facility. It's actually, it's got a spectacular view. But it's back off of the road, right at the North Bend Coos Bay City Limits. This building was recently purchased and is being renovated by a private developer for low-income housing options. So. Excuse me. So there is no options for being able to utilize that site. Many folks have inquired about putting the homeless underneath the McCullough Bridge. The area directly under the bridge, that's the Oregon Department of Transportation. They own that. That's the right of way. We don't have authority there. It is open to camping under the law, but cannot be regulated by the city due to its ownership rights. However, the area, the land west of the bridge, which is now owned by Pembina. That was. Referred to as sort of the LNG gas line where they acquired it from the Pierce family. And that was going to be for housing for other workers. We did reach out to Pembina about using or leasing their property. And we have also been told no. There was some question recently in a work session, whether or not the port had first right of refusal on that property. I've been able to confirm that they do not. So if at some point Pembina does look to make that available. They are aware that the city has an interest in some discussion. Some folks have asked us about the vacant land across from Pony Village Mall. For instance, even my wife had asked about some of the land behind one of the businesses up that way. It is privately owned. It was recently purchased. It actually went under contract. I believe in December for a potential large-scale commercial residential development. They have talked behind closed doors with the Urban Renewal Agency Board. And that's as much as we can actually disclose at this point. But it is anticipated to have a large-scale development there. I know that just a week and a half ago, I saw surveyors on that property. So you're slowly seeing some movement over there. Another inquiry was, in fact, multiple inquiries came in about the tribal property up on Tremont Avenue. This would be just. South of our. Boardwalk property there on Harbor. This is actually a brownfield site. Most folks don't realize that. Because it served as a sawmill for over a hundred and thirty years. That it's actually on the EPA's brownfield site. And in twenty twenty, the property owners received a federal grant. To conduct a face-to-environmental site assessment of the fifty-acre waterfront property. So it is a. A brownfield hazardous waste site. And it's not conducive. It poses risk to human health and to the environment. So at most, they have allowed logs to be stored there and you see right now several barges. That are leased space there. The adjacent to that, which I just referenced, was the Harbor Street Development, also known as the North Bend Boardwalk. This site was built in part with urban renewal agency dollars, which are designed to eliminate blight. The Coquell Tribe actually provided easements for the project. And it's currently a designated park and is currently restricted to no parking between ten PM and six AM. However, it is a site that potentially could be re-designated by. By the city council. Another site that has come up is the former Coca-Cola plant on New Mark. That site is actually under contract right now to become a Oregon beverage recycling facility. It's under contract for two point seven million. And there's also a backup offer on the property. So we did inquire on a potential purchase or lease of that property. I refer to these as the sort of blue roof buildings, the former state buildings down on Sheridan at twenty twenty-five and twenty seventy-five. These buildings are now privately owned. The owner did contact the city and was encouraged to submit a lease proposal. To rent the facility for overnight homeless parking. And the conversation sort of stopped there when they realized that homeless would have to be able to be let in and let out. During specific hours and that security would have to be a key. Meanwhile, they are getting the site ready to operate as one side is a storage facility. And another as a multipurpose office space for a couple businesses. At this time, that finishes, Madam Mayor, the staff presentation. We go into public comment where your city recorder will be able to go down the list and call on folks. Just a reminder that she'll be timing everybody to three minutes. And that you'll be asked to provide your name and address for the record. And again, the key here is professionalism and decorum. The council is here tonight as well as staff to listen and hear from the public. And again, the mandate to the council is that by July of twenty twenty-three. They must update their ordinances with time, manner and place. And until they do, there are certain portions of our code that are non-avoidant and cannot be enforced. So with that, I'll hand it back over to you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. I do want to make sure our Public Works Director, Mr. Dunham, didn't have his hand raised. Or if he wanted to add to the presentation, if that, maybe that was an accident. So I don't know if the city recorder can unmute him if he has something to add. Or if he was, or if that was an accident. Thank you, Mr. Mill Iron, for going through all of those. I know the council and I have been reading lots of emails and suggestions. So it was. Nice for you to be able to surmise the reasons why some of those areas are not an option. So that was very clear and we appreciate you going through that. Well, it doesn't look like Mr. Dunham has a comment, so we'll go ahead and move on to the public comment portion. And I will go ahead and let our city recorder take it from here. She's got the timer and the. The controls to be able to let everybody speak and can probably explain to everyone. How it will work if she's going in alphabetical order or whatnot. So we'll go through that. And then once we reach the end of that time of people wanting to speak this evening, then we can discuss our next step. So. As many people know, hopefully if they've been paying attention, no decision has been made yet. And this is just another part of the process to get as much public input and feedback as we can. So Kayla, we'll go ahead and let you take it from here.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I have a formal list of everybody that has signed up to speak and have tried to catch everyone as they've come into the meeting that were not pre-registered. So bear with me. When I call your name, if you could please unmute yourself and turn on your camera. That'll spotlight your view for not only the city council, but for the others watching. Steve Nye. Steve Nye.
Yeah, can you, can you see me? No. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, okay. Well, I guess I guess hearing is good enough. I'm not that pretty anyway, so. So I guess I didn't know I was going to go first in only three minutes. I won't use the whole three minutes. It's lost on me the difficulty of the decision to actually find a space. But I'm here on behalf of Ingalls Furniture two zero seven nine Sherman, that are main. Um, but I'm here on behalf of Ingles Furniture two zero seven nine Sherman, that are main retail um. Location, and then we also have our distribution center on two thousand Harbor, which is down on the Harpfront. So that's one of the proposed or suggested spaces. Um, so we have delivery trucks to come in, come in and out all the time, we also have the oyster companies down there that also come in and out all the time. So it's to take up that space would be a major issue for us. And uh, the other, other aspect of that is. North Bend has put a ton of energy into the, the boardwalk, I mean, you don't have to go any further than to see. Our city administrators background um happens to be what? The city, the city of North Bend Boardwalk, um, so I think they all envision that space to be. A go-to, it's already a go-to, but to. To, to go even further with that, and to have homeless down there, I don't think I have to say much about that. Um, that could be a definite issue, so again, there's no ideal space, but. It's a, to us, to Ingles Furniture and to the city of North Bend and the community, I would think that would be a, a very bad place, so. I think that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Steve.
Yes.
John Meinig, Meinig. And again, if you could state your name and your street address for the record.
Okay. Uh, yes, my name is uh. Yeah, doesn't wanna start my video, okay, my name is John Meinig, it's M E Y N I N K. And I live at sixteen eighty-one Arthur Street in North Bend. Um, well, I appreciate the city making this time available to hear from citizens. And I appreciated listening to Tara Johnson going through. Basic information on the situation in our community. I've looked at social media as this meeting approached, and there's a lot of. A lot of comments about where the uh this um camping should not be allowed and um. Specifically, you know, the place that you're thinking about, the uh community building parking lot, there's all kinds of reasons. And um, and to tell you the truth, I have, I have another. Place to uh, to discourage being considered, and that's the airport, uh, one of the. Um, things in the um proposed staff. Uh, places that were listed on the materials that the staff was looking at was the airport property and. Um, I wouldn't, I would say that that's just simply not available. Uh, for the simple reason that, as was mentioned by Mr. Milleron a little while ago. The airport is planning, the airport does not want homeless camping on its property, it simply doesn't for whatever reason, whether that's. Good or bad, they simply are not going to allow it, and so they are seeking the two million dollar funding to put up a fence. Uh, to surround their property so people can get onto their property. And there's a group of citizens uh in the airport heights area that is totally opposed to their fence. Because it will cut off, it will damage wildlife habitat, it will cut off a lot of the trails that people use all the time. For bike riding and bird watching and walking their children and walking their dogs and all kinds of reasons, there's a lot of traffic out there. And by putting up a fence, it will cut off many of those activities. And the only way I think we have a chance of persuading them not to put up their fence. Is if there's not going to be any camping there, so my proposal, I've looked at your draft ordinance and while. Frankly, I can't quite understand what you mean by public property, the definition is very confusing to me, but you have a section of prohibited camping. And my uh, my request, my proposal, I guess, is to add a paragraph to that, that uh simply says. Uh, camping will not be permitted on the airport property. Now, um, I had a couple of proposals.
Your time is up, if you could wrap it up.
Okay, I had a couple of proposals that Mr. Milleron has already shot down anyway, so um. That's uh, I think that's all I have, thank you.
Bill Kenyon.
I'm here, trying to start the video, it says I cannot start it, so.
You see what I can do on my side?
I don't know why that is, Sarah, I've got, I've been requested, good evening.
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Bill Kenyon, I live at twenty-two twelve Madrona Street, right here in North Bend, Oregon, nine seven four five nine.
All right, and go ahead.
Well, my property uh is actually the former home of the legendary North Bend High School alum and Marshfield football coach Pete Sussex. Next door to me is the former home of Clyde Allen. We love our neighborhood and our neighbors, we all get along, we watch out for each other. We take pride in our homes, in our yards, in our community, one of the best parts of living in this area is our close proximity to Clyde Allen Field. First opened in nineteen forty-seven, Clyde Allen has been home to some of the finest amateur baseball to be found anywhere on the South Coast. On a, is without, without a doubt, one of the most family-friendly venues to be found. On a typical game day, the or parking lot at Clyde Allen is full and both sides of Madrona will be lined with overflow parking. The one constant that I hear from visiting fan, fans, and I go to every game. Is how much they enjoy traveling to games at Clyde Allen and how lucky we are to have such a nice facility. In addition to the local teams here, Clyde Allen plays host to several regional tournaments. That bring in hundreds of visitors and thousands of dollars to our community, it's a historic landmark and an asset to the, the community. It's actually North Bend's field of dreams and it deserves to be treated as such. Over the years, I've reported numerous instances of broken down RVs camp at Clyde Allen, and the response from North Bend PD has been lackluster. Once they even asked me to take photographs of the vehicle, when I did, the occupant hurled obscenities and threats of violence at my wife and I. Saying, I know where you live. When finally gone, the lot was littered with broken glass and trash, and during one of those instances in August of twenty twenty-one, six months ago. I spoke with Mr. Milliron about this proposed camp, camping ordinance, and he assured me at that time. That this was not a viable option and it would never be considered. Right now, there's an older RV over here that's been there for forty-eight hours, an associated vehicle has no plates. And no insurance, probably. We know for a fact it's being driven off the lot and operated on the city streets, I notified North Bend PD and they said there's nothing they can do. They would not even stand. Pardon?
Thirty seconds.
Well, so we're not getting any help here, so I got some questions, who'll, who's gonna be opening and closing these gates? How do you propose locking them in at night? Do you really think you're gonna clear this thing out at six o'clock every morning, cause because we all know that that's not gonna work? And, and what about the plan for removing abandoned and operation vehicles, uh, what, what about capacity? Do you, have you determined how many RVs, how many tents, how many people? Are gonna be there?
Go ahead and wrap it up, please.
So I'll close with this, Clyde Allen is a local historic landmark. It, our community and our youth deserve better than having that parking lot turned into a homeless camp. Where they were literally, people were literally walked through the middle of it just to get through the gate. So I strongly urge the council to abandon it as your short-term solution and focus on better long-term solutions, thank you. Have a good evening, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Jill Mitchell.
Hello?
Jill, did you not wish to speak this evening?
Are you, are, is it on?
It is.
Okay, my name is Jill Brown Mitchell, I live at nine four five six zero Ridgeway Lane, born and raised in North Bend, Simpson Heights. Um, the community center, I feel is not the best place for the homeless camp. One, you rent that, um, the parking lot is. A place where people can park and go into the community center when you have events there. I've listened to everybody talk, I don't know how many spaces you're gonna actually do. But when you have an event there and it goes through the night, is the police gonna be there to watch these people? Who's gonna clean up after they leave at six o'clock in the morning? My big concern is mental health around that neighborhood, I don't think um anybody has um thought about what happens if your worker. Has a mental health issue, are they gonna call the cops, are they gonna call the fire department? Who's gonna take on that responsibility when you have mental health cases at those camps? The cleaning, is that every day, is it gonna be on weekends, is it gonna be before the tournaments at the famous Clyde Allen? Is that gonna be stationed where there's gonna be blue rooms and then you have to have Ruder Ruder come in and clean it every day? Um, I am concerned about the drugs because there are kids that play in that park, they go down, they run, they do exercises. We're not really thinking about the kids that go to that um park. And work out and do the baseball teams, and we've got so many people that come from out of town for that tournament that the gentleman talked about. Um, is the mayor or the council people or people are gonna go down and make sure that park is parking area cleaned. Um, the mental health part, um, I think Coos Bay has had issues with mental health at some of these camps. I know no solution is the right solution, but putting it in a neighborhood where there's. A history of people donating dollars and time at that baseball park. Um, I think is a slap that. The homeless people are gonna be there, I drove there at five o'clock in the morning, um. There's a lot down by the North Bend Fire Department, there was four rigs there, I think that would be an area you could clean up and. Tear out some of the grass and put the um homeless people there. There had be real easy contact with the fire department for medical and the police is right down the street. I think the last, the last part is the historical of that area and what needs to be done. Um, everybody has a hard job on these homeless people, but I do not believe that is the right place to have it, especially when myself rents that community center. And there's not gonna be enough parking if you're gonna put a homeless camp there, and I think you.
Thank you. Cindy Coolin.
Hi. Hi, my name is Cindy Coolin and I live at two two nine three twelfth Court. We're the, can you hear me? Yeah. Okay, um, we're the cul-de-sac that faces north, um Clyde Allen Field, which neck is next door to the community center. My husband and I have resided here for thirty-seven years and we have been very actively participants in. Activities at the community center and the ball field, and I know. Everybody knows by now the mayor and the city council members and the city administrator. Are using the community center parking lot as an option to put the homeless center in. But if this is implemented, that camp is gonna be right in the middle of the two sports facilities, the ball field, the baseball field and the soccer fields. And these are used exclusively by yet the youth of all ages, and I really think this is totally unacceptable for the safety of our children. If I were still raising my daughters who are now grown, they would not be allowed to participate in anything at the community center or the ball fields. Cause I think this is totally unsafe, I read an article that somebody posted on homelessness. On our community page of our um neighborhood, and it caught my eye because it said that um. Homelessness is mainly a human problem, not a housing problem. And the driving factors of homelessness are drug addiction and mental illness. And according to a study done at the UCLA California Poly Lab, approximately three quarters of the people that are living in. Cars, tents, and on the streets suffer from mental illness or drug addiction or both. So if that's really true, why would we put our kids in the middle? Uh, or on either side of a homeless camp if this kind of activity takes place? Do you think that's really a wise decision? Anyway, the article goes on to say that um if we make our city more attractive to the homeless, they will come. But if the public stops giving money to panhandlers, and if the cities stop allowing public encampments and open drug consumption. And if the cities start prosecuting property crimes, we would have more success redirecting the homeless away from that life of self-destruction. Towards a life of hope and meant through mental health treatment, drug rehab and job training. Now, I know the state doesn't really go along with those suggestions, so our hands are tied, but I also have. The concerns about who's gonna clean up this mess, who's gonna get every camper out in the morning, who's gonna clear the site? Before this, the children arrive, so I trust you, our council and mayor, that we have elected. To look out for our best interests and find a different location, preferably away from a residential neighborhood. And I thank you very much for your time in holding this meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Ron Moore. Ron Moore, did you wish to speak this evening? Barry Sorenson. Mr. Sorenson, are you there, are you able to unmute? Janice, did you wish to speak this evening?
Um, are you asking me, Janice Longley, no, I have, I'm just listening, thank you.
Beth Chu.
Hello?
Hello, did you wish to speak this evening?
I do, um, it's not letting me start the video, though, okay, there we go. Hi, my name is Elizabeth Chu, two two three five Main Court, I'm in the Hillside Terrace neighborhood, you. City councillors and mayor, thank you for um having this town hall meeting, hopefully you guys aren't sick of hearing from me. I came to um present for the public the results of the petition we started. And design not, and um going against the designation of specifically the community center Clyde Allen um Ballfield Parking Lot. Um, as the homeless camp, um, you city councillors, mayor, um, Mr. Milleron, you guys all, I believe, got my email today. For the public to know, it was eight hundred and fifty people thus far, it's still an active petition. Um, through my own perusal, I saw about ten or fifteen of those um names that. Were a little bit suspect, might not be real people, so bring that number down to eight hundred and thirty-five. The vast majority of people um that responded to the petition to not have it designated as a homeless camp. Were local people, there is a little bit of a problem with an online petition in that, apologize, you can hear my daughter in the background. Um, the, the, the vast majority of people were local, there is a problem, though, um, for example, my neighbor, Eloise Wagner, signed the petition. She lives in North Bend, she was registered as Coos Bay, so keep that as mind as you look at those um numbers. Um, I think it's pretty clear and you have seen that the community is against that specific parking lot. I hope you also do see that the majority of the community members, including myself, want to help you. Fix this problem, want to help you find a good solution. Um, I've suggested and many people have suggested many different options, um, one thing that I think Mr. uh Milleron did not bring up was nineteen twenty-two. Sheridan Avenue and also some solutions of something a little bit more creative where you. and also some solutions of something a little bit more creative where you designate a certain number of city streets and where you just fence the facilities that those experiencing homelessness would need, including trash disposal, porta potties, that sort of thing. That is my point for tonight, but I would also like to include another bit about if the city council and mayor, you do vote and you do decide to proceed with the community center parking lot, I think that you need to slow down and do a traffic study first. I think you will, like I said in the, I think it was last Monday at the city council work session, I said that you will probably be really surprised, maybe not, at how many people utilize the soccer fields and the ball fields. And this will be the first time that both, they will be working simultaneously. So thank you for this time to comment.
Thank you. Dawn Hall? Dawn, did you wish to speak this evening? Starla Paris?
I am Starla Paris, six six five eight two East Bay Road. And I am a community partnership coordinator for the Department of Oregon Department of Human Services Self-Sufficiency. And I am just here to listen tonight. Thank you.
Patrick Wright?
Go ahead, Patrick. All right, thank you for having me. My name is Patrick Wright and I'm the executive director of Operation Rebuild Hope. But before that, I graduated from Marshfield High School. I played ball on Clyde Allen. I was a little league for the whole time I was in this area. So I am from Coos County, native. I joined the Marine Corps, I was in the Marine Corps for fourteen years, did three tours to Iraq and ended up homeless in these streets. So normally I have no problem public speaking, but I'm just really disappointed in my community at the moment. When I was homeless here looking for hope and trying to get my life back on track, I'd reach out to the community groups and I'd see the hate spewed about homeless on there. And it would just leave me even more hopeless. So after my third suicide attempt, it took another veteran to reach out to me and show me that there's a different way to live life. So since then, we've opened three developments. Two of them are over by the main, over by the bridge going north out of town by Ashworth Market, Ryan's Home and also the Parkside Motel. We have another location that's downtown North Bend. And so we are well invested in this community. Even though we do serve homeless as a, as our primary clients, we also brought in two point seven million dollars in this community. We have raised the property value by the three locations that we fixed up by one point eight million dollars. And we've helped over a hundred veterans. So I would encourage those involved to, to look at all options presented. But as a homeless provider, I did also look at the locations and I couldn't find anything that looked like it would work. The, what the community center does allows, it allows a safe concealed place that is out of the weather, out of the initial wind and allows a place for emergency vehicles and service providers like myself to be able to show up and offer services to help get people out of those type of situations and into better housing. And I know any other provider out there is going to end up doing the same thing. Is our goal is to not have people in these camps. It keeps supporting our community and with solutions so that these camps are not needed. But community, I've been bringing this up for ten years and you have ignored me. And now we're here where you can't ignore it anymore. So it's now in your front yard, so let's come up with solutions. You can't ignore it anymore. Let's come up with something good.
Thank you, Patrick. Connie Monahan?
I am here.
Hi Connie.
My video won't start, it says the host has stopped it. I don't need a video, but I do want to speak. I, I want to, I want to. One of the common threads that I've been hearing tonight is the safety of our community and the children. I live at two three, two three four zero Lombard Street in North Bend. I live right across the street from the backside of Oak Street Park. We have homeless vehicles, motorhomes, all kinds of different vehicles parked there all the time, most of the time. We observe a lot of different activities from the folks who are there. And most of it is criminal. This is a park where children go. This is a park where when moms see this happening, they don't send their children to the park. I can honestly say when, when a motorhome is parked there and there's a lot of activity with, with, with this motorhome, I don't see a lot of children in the park. After the motorhomes should happen to leave, which takes at least a week or maybe more, and then another one comes in. I don't feel safe in my home. We have, our, my, our home is lit all the way around and we have Ring cameras. We have a lot of people breaking into the yards, stealing things. And we watch them with our Ring cameras go right back to the motorhomes where they live. I'm, I'm just wondering why City of North Bend is the very last community to put guidelines in to keep homeless out of living in, in the community areas, neighborhood areas with, near homes. There's a lot of locations and they should not live near homes or near the children's parks. So why is North Bend the very last community to adopt guidelines for this? When all of the other counties, I mean, the communities surrounding us, other counties, other cities, other, other areas have adopted guidelines. Their guidelines are not acceptable to a lot of the homeless living there. North Bend, we have influx of homeless in North Bend because of our lack of guidelines. I was told this by a law enforcement officer and I know that it's true. So it's very frustrating living in your own home and to be afraid. I'm, I'm through.
Thank you. Angela Archer?
Hello?
Hello, whenever you're ready.
Hi. Get my, I have prepared some notes and just getting everything ready. Man, this is heated. So good evening, my name is Angela Archer. I am the owner and sole proprietor of all the Apothecary in downtown North Bend at twenty forty-eight Sherman Avenue. As well as a founding member of Operation Rebuild Hope. Thank you to the council for giving us again the opportunity to voice opinions regarding the homeless and houseless camp. With the acceptance of the facade grant, a lot of business owners are trying their hardest to bring the downtown area back to a beautiful and inviting place to shop. And as we come into summer months, we are coming into tourism. So having a camp located in the downtown or on the bayfront would definitely hinder already low operations of businesses that we have. We're already struggling down there. But I am a, I'm just super, sorry, I'm a firm believer that if I don't like a decision to state my piece and bring a resolution to the community. I believe that Clyde Allen Park is a great opportunity and a good space to have this camp. It is available for service providers. It's accessible and it offers some concealment because nobody wants to see a houseless camp. I have another upper, another place that I was thinking of was the, the North Bend Information Center. I understand that there is a park that's right next to it. But I think that's important that this brings another concealment place, a safer place for campers, emergency response vehicles, as well as service providers to pull in off of the main road and address any issues that there may be. Yes, the park is located near and that's why it is imperative for the city to ensure the camp is monitored and proper disposal for hygienic living. I feel that we, as working with the homeless and as we do, there's such a misconception of exactly how people become homeless and why they're homeless and the drug use. And it just, it's very frustrating to hear community members, after listening to Tara Johnson, explain exactly what is happening to the homeless community in, in our town. I think it's sad that we can't even take proper information and just misconstrue it because people are using what they find off of social media and it's sad. I believe that we can work together to solve this problem and rehumanize the homeless. And thank you again for your time and your efforts in trying to solve this crisis.
Thank you. Brad Horning?
Okay, my name is Brad Horning, I live at four ninety Park Avenue. And both of the proposed ideas are kind of in my area. In terms of Clyde Allen Field, I think one thing that's a safety concern for me is it's a place where people from the community center park, it's a place where possibly homeless camping could be parked there. And also our players who are in high school, driving from the high school to Clyde Allen Field to also park in the parking lot. So there could be quite a lot of cars or things there. At the same time, with it being a baseball field, there are balls that naturally leave that part of the field and go towards the parking lot. For most cars and things, that's not really an issue. But when you have, if you have materials on an older trailer or something or, or tents or things, those balls are going to, can, could cause harm in a normal playing day. Additionally, when you are hosting games, you have people coming from out of town. And so then they come to town with an expectation of a place to park. And then that place to park would, would probably not be available if these vehicles or tents were in this area. So my biggest concern is the amount of clogged up parking that could happen, balls leaving the ballpark and hitting vehicles. And there's a number of times during the season where we return after ten o'clock at night. So you come back into the parking lot, have to then unlock it, get it, bring your stuff in, unload it and, and send your kids off and possibly waking somebody up with that. I, I think this is something that a community needs to look for and needs to find a solution. I think this is a really tough spot to put it into between youth soccer fields, high school baseball fields and things. I understand it's maybe not quite the eyesore that maybe some other places would be because we're slightly removed off of Broadway, but I don't think this is a safe place for it to be. I think it would impact the financial part of what comes in from Clyde Allen at times. There are, on probably in every other year, we host a tournament that lasts five days, brings in a hundred and twenty-five hotel rooms just for players, not including their parents. So I think this could have a, a big impact on that and decrease the use of the community center. The other idea that impacts me as well is, is over near the bridge. I think it could be difficult as you're coming into town, driving over this beautiful bridge and, and having a, something that might be somewhat of an eyesore underneath the bridge as well. So I appreciate your time, I appreciate you putting all of this together. Hopefully that we have some time to look at some more options. I just don't think Clyde Allen is the best one. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Brinkman?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for letting me speak. I live at twenty-one hundred Madrona Street. And that's only four or five houses down from the Clyde Allen Park. My grandsons are with me every day at this location. Right in between a baseball field and a youth soccer field is the absolute wrong place to have a homeless camp. The neighbors have told me they'll not let their children walk to school if that occurs. It's unsafe for our children. And our property values will diminish immediately when and if this does happen. I mean, the entire neighborhood is concerned. There are too many other viable options if we, if we look. Not in the smack, smack dab center of a residential area sandwiched in by two of our youth's playing fields, soccer in the Clyde Allen Park. The one speaker prior to me said that nobody wants to come into town and look at a homeless camp. Well, nobody wants to look out their window either and look at it. Who's going to clean up the trash? Who's going to make sure there are no hypodermic needles for our children to find and step on or, or pick up? You know, you can watch kids intently and they still get a hold of things they shouldn't. If you lock the gates at a certain time at night, then they're going to be sleeping on our sidewalks or in our yards. We all have a concern for our safety, for our vehicles out front and our homes as well. There's got to be another alternative. I'm not insensitive to the homeless. I feel for them as well, but there's got to be a better option than putting them in a residential area in between two sports parks for our most vulnerable. I'm through speaking, thank you.
Thank you. Charlotte Hutt?
Okay, I can't start my video.
Just a moment, there you go.
Okay. Hi, I'm Charlotte Hutt and it's interesting listening to all of this conversation. It's very hard to think about backyards and not in my backyard. But you know what? I'm a mathematician and one of the things that people aren't talking about is if you're talking about four hundred people out of nine thousand people, that's, you know, four percent of the population. That's, you know, one out of every twenty-five people is house, is homeless or houseless. And then there's the underhoused people. This is a huge part of our community. And I'm really appreciate that efforts are being made to do something. And, and I'm rather new to North Bend Kus Bay, so I don't know what the answer is. But I'm really willing to work with, I'm, I'm glad to see that there's some other good initiatives going on here. I actually came here from Grants Pass. We did have hypodermic needles all over town. And that was because we, the city was trying to kick the campers out of town. And that just meant they scattered all over in the neighborhoods. And I, and I agree, I really think it would be good to have people someplace where they can be served and where we can help move people forward. So I thank you, all of you who are here and concerned about the community. And I'm glad to be here too. Thanks.
Thank you. Ashley O'Neil?
I'm here. My name is Ashley O'Neil, I live at two two five nine twelfth Court in North Bend.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Once again, I know that the council and our community and our children have been put in a tough spot by the state legislation. Once again, I know that the council and our community and our children have been put in a tough spot by the state legislation. North Bend has a limited space and avenue for our children to participate in activities. And if the decision is made to utilize the parking lot at the North Bend Community Center for homeless, then it will be a direct impact on, impact on those activities. In addition to hurting these kids spaces, we will be hurting what use of the community center we have currently. It is just a matter of time before that lot is filthy and we cannot keep up with that trash. And the community center won't be far behind. I do not disagree with the fact that there should be a place for these folks and I am sympathetic for them. But to park them and, I'm sorry. And we should have a place to park so that they do not line our streets. But there's so much more that we need to answer before we place them in that parking lot. How much space is needed? What will, space will be enough? Have we looked at city right of ways? Have we looked at the other landowners that were not mentioned under the bridge like LTM Knife River? And if they would be interested in selling? We've been told that there is no money for this, but after listening to the mayor's city of, state of the city address last week, where it was touted that we have found many grants and monies for a great deal of things in the city. And I can see that this would be a potential, a potential purchase could fall under her quote unquote goal number one of identifying and securing additional revenues for the long-term sustainability of our city. The grants for that goal have been received and included over $4.6 million. Approximately $2.1 million of that is going to help with a list of projects and one of which is the North Bend Community Center. Will we be renovating that before or after the camp destroys the building? Maybe we should be looking for a grant that can purchase property for this need. And then we could be looking at other pieces of property. Maybe the state has property that we should be asking for help with because this is an issue that they gave to us. Another huge question I have is why RVs and campers are considered when the Oregon House Bill 3115 refers to that local law regulating sitting, lying, sleeping, and keeping warm and dry outdoors? How does this include an RV? If it does include an illegal RV like what is parked there currently, then does it override the current ordinance 10.04430 sub number one, which is regarding sleeping on an RV parked on city streets? It states while parked on a city street, no person shall live or reside in such a vehicle with living quarters. If this decision is made, then I would not be shocked if we see a recall campaign for anyone that votes for it. There has got to be a better place that helps our children and their areas stay intact, including your kids and grandkids. Thank you.
Thank you. Hannah Kayler.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes. Hi, I'm Hannah Kayler. Address is 1464 Bay Street, North Bend. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak this evening and to be a part of the conversation. I know this has been a really difficult situation to maneuver. And again, I just appreciate us all being able to chime in. I wanted to go, this is Eloise, by the way, I wanted to go on record opposed to the idea of putting the camp underneath the bridge. I just wanted to point out the fact that that area too would impact children in our community. For clearing out the camp in the mornings, I mean, there are two paths off of that property. One would take them directly through Simpson Park and the other would take them over to Ferry Road Park. Two areas that I think are very important to children in our community and would impact just as many people as the parking lot over at the community center. Also, I, after hearing the list of potential places or, you know, all of the areas that the city has looked at, I just wanted to encourage the city maybe to again, it's okay sweetheart, reach out to the owners of that property in downtown North Bend that's being used as a storage, well, that's being turned into long-term storage. If they have approached the city interested in leasing the land, I think, I mean, maybe something could be worked out. It sounds like they were, you know, kind of thrown off by the idea of having to open and close the gates. I mean, if the city is going to have to purchase land anyway, I mean, why not employ someone to open and close the gates there? So that was just, I didn't want to come on and only say, no, don't put them under the bridge. But I think, you know, that could potentially be another avenue to explore. So again, thank you. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Nancy Hackworth. Nancy Hackworth. Nancy, did you wish to speak this evening? I have Mike with a Beaver email address.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me?
We can. Can you please state your full name and address for the record?
Yeah, it's Mike Napier and my address is 2054 Madrona Street, North Bend.
Thank you.
And I just, I just wanted to say I've, I've lived on this in North Bend now for a little over 20 years. I've been at this particular residence for about 19 years. And to put the homeless camp at the Clyde Allen Ball Field parking lot is, to me, it just doesn't seem like that's a, a great location. I think there's maybe other, other alternatives for, for a homeless camp. I think the homeless, you know, at the end of the day, they do need a place to go and be safe. But I think with our kids that, you know, frequent the area, we have a soccer field down below at the Banger property. And then we have several kids that attend the Clyde Allen Ball Field. There's several nights in the summers that there's ballgames going on till 10:00 PM at night. The lights are on. It's, it's really neat to see. Just, you know, that when I would leave my house to go to work. And then not to mention, I have a teenage daughter that she likes to walk her dog down our street. That, that probably would stop, obviously, if a homeless camp was to be installed at that location at the community center. Also, our property values, I'm sure would diminish. I'm sure they would just tank with, with the homeless camp just down like literally five houses from, from our residence. So I don't think that would be good for anybody on this street at the end of the day. And I just think, you know, I think I feel like there's some better locations other than the ballfields. And also, also, I'm just looking at some notes. Also, you know, I don't know who was the one from the city council, if there were several that suggested the community center in the first place. But how would they feel if it was, you know, close to their home? If they, if they're locate, if that was the location for the homeless camp? Anyways, and then also, you know, sometimes we, you know, they talked about temporary solution. And usually those temporary solutions turn into permanent solutions. Just like the storage container that's stored there currently right now, that was stored there. It's been there for almost two years now and it hasn't been moved as of yet. And so anyways, I think that's all I had to say. I just think there's better options available and thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you. Barbara Stevenson.
Hi, my name is Barbara Stevenson. My address is 66157 East Bay Road. I'm not going to start my video because that will impair my ability to speak. I don't.
She said, she told, she said.
I'm not going to start my video. I've heard a lot of no's tonight from the presentation by the city staff. All the private property owners and even not so private property owners like the airport and whatever else, they've all said no. Public property owners have said no. Almost everyone speaking tonight has said no. And so what I want to say is people without a home, they are first and foremost people. We should refer to them as people without homes. And I would like to see us work together as a community to find a solution that will work to help these people. Okay? So let's keep working.
Did we lose you, Barbara? Barbara? Okay, thank you.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Noel Porter. Noel, did you wish to speak this evening? David Strafachi. Excuse me. I butchered that.
Hello.
You, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes ma'am, David Strafachi. I actually live in Bloomington, Indiana. 2262 South Samuel Lane. I do plan on relocating to North Bend in the spring.
Thank you.
I'm just here to introduce myself and my organization that we plan on moving up there. I'm the Chief Operating Officer of Blue Water Overwatch. What we are is a maritime-based nonprofit startup. And what we plan on doing is bringing down a decommissioned Coast Guard cutter. Plan to use that to provide resources and temporary housing to those in need. Myself and, and our founders are actually also Marine Corps veterans. So I'd love to reach out to Operation Rebuild Hope hopefully soon. And my partner Lucas will actually speak on the specific use case for the cutter. I'm just here to listen tonight. I've actually learned a lot. It's been very eye-opening. I would love any community input or involvement. You can reach out to us at bluwateroverwatch.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Lance Benton.
Hey, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Let me see, try and start video here. Does that work?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. First, I would like to thank Mayor Alan Gelkey and the city council for the opportunity to comment. As they probably recognize my name, I've been fairly active with emails to them. I appreciate the pickle that you and the community find ourselves in. I'm sorry, my name's Lance Benton, address 2693 Commercial Street in North Bend. The courts have kind of tied our hands up here a little bit. It's not an easy situation and I've come to know that. Been following this case closely. One thought that I have is who gets to live in North Bend? Someone previously pointed out that 400 people currently homeless in North Bend is about 4% of our population. Are those really local residents? When I had nine residences established around College Park Community Church within a block of my house, many of those were out of state license plates, Nevada, California, no licenses. Kind of hard to tell where they were from. So perhaps there's some attraction to this area and I see it. It doesn't get really cold in the winter. It doesn't get really hot in the summer. It's scenic. There's things to do. If you park in the right spot, it's fairly short walk to Walmart, McDonald's, a lot of places with basic services. As I look at some of the laws and regulations that are passed, they talk about sleeping and seeking warmth and things like that. So that to me kind of implies, you know, a sleeping bag on a sidewalk in a public space. Quite frankly, some of these, the people that are homeless and counted in these numbers now, they're living. You can get a $500 old RV that doesn't run on Facebook Coos County for sale and get somebody to tow it somewhere and, and you can live there. So maybe, maybe a tact to see is going around allowable hours for sleeping and sheltering. So if you say that's from eight at night until six in the morning, but then you have to move, maybe that's something that would get them somewhere more suitable than on residential streets or in parks or places like that. And would allow some sort of an ordinance that allows a little bit of teeth to the law. I'm not insensitive to the situation, but I, if the place becomes too attractive, what if we a year from now have 800 people that are unsheltered and homeless in North Bend or 1,000? And it's 10% of our population. There's no way we're ever going to be able to have sufficient camping places. Whatever you want to call it, to have that work. So there are plenty of camping places around here. They're called campgrounds. The state has many. There's commercial ones around and things like that. RVs and, I'm sorry.
Go ahead and wrap up. Your time's over.
Okay, the, let's try and differentiate, I think, between sheltering and sleeping and, and people that are essentially living rent-free on residential streets. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thomas Langford.
Yeah. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Can.
Thank you. I want to thank the council president, city council members, mayor and the city manager for putting this on and for speaking to the citizens. My name is Thomas Langford. I reside at 2230 Main Court here in North Bend, Oregon. And I'm in opposition of placing this homeless camp at the community center. As a resident of North Bend, I value our community and the voice each resident has in our community. We have a problem. Most communities throughout the nation have the same problem. North Bend's problems magnified because we're landlocked. And what we're here to do today and what the council is here to do is to look at designation of a space. The problem itself is going to be much more complex and take longer to resolve. But today we're trying to resolve a space designation. The citizens of this community voiced their opposition of placing a homeless site near a residential area by a 78% margin in the survey that was handed out. Let me start my video. You can see me. I would implore the council to consider alternatives such as vacant parking areas around the North Bend annex. There's a fenced lot around the North Bend annex as well that's not currently being used. Is that facility, I believe, was sold to the city of North Bend through urban or no funds. City streets was also mentioned and designating some city street parking locations. And again, utilization of the North Bend boardwalk space. Those spaces also put the individuals that we're speaking about in close proximity to adapt to provide resources and services close proximity to the police department and close proximity to the fire department. I implore the city and all the residents to continue to find solutions to try to make our community feel safe and encourage investment in our community. I thank the city council for its time and for this continued conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Johanna Warner. Johanna, did you wish to speak this evening? Randy Freeman. Doesn't look like Randy is with us online any longer. Jeremy Rangle. Lucas Burton.
Hello.
Lucas.
Hello.
All right.
Can I be heard?
We can hear you. And go ahead and state your name and.
So I'm Lucas Burton at 9531 Amanda Circle, Savannah, Ohio. I am not from North Bend, but I am with the organization that Dave was talking about, Blue Water Overwatch. Our main objective is to try and make sure that we can keep people off the streets and get people out of the cycle of homelessness and destitute. Mainly, the way that we plan to do that is we are able to provide up to about eighty-five beds for people to sleep in. On top of that, we have plans to open a soup kitchen, help people get and secure those jobs and stay in them. So while we understand that there is a big issue with the homelessness being on the streets and we do not have enough space to solve that, we are hoping to see if we can help a little bit of it. We are open to suggestions or ideas from the rest of the community and hope that people will email us or talk to us through our website, bluewateroverwatch.com. Generally speaking, our hope is to try and make sure that we can get people into a better place, whether they're there because of mental issue or because of the fact that they have become bankrupt. Either way, people should be seen as people. Let's try to get them off the streets and into better situations. Thank you, that's all the time.
Thank you. Robin Rep.
Hi. I'm Robin, I'm Robin Rep and I'm owner of Pedal to the Metal Flowers at nineteen ninety-three Sherman Avenue here in North Bend. And believe it or not, today is seven years that I've owned this business. And in seven years, I have seen the vehicle homelessness rise in downtown. And I do not believe that the Sheridan Harbor location down here is a good, safe area for us to be able to house them temporarily, due to the fact that when we go downtown, you cannot utilize the facility, the walking down on the waterfront, the vandalism and the trash has increased each year in the seven years that I've been here. I go down there to take pictures of my product and I don't feel that I'm in a safe environment, that I cannot even walk down there. Even when I drive my vehicle, I do not feel that it's a place that I can work down there, have lunch or take pictures with my models down there. And I just find that it is increasingly getting more and more, as well as our current parking lot that we have right here downtown. We've really worked hard as business owners in our community to try to get tourism over here and to get people to stop and visit our downtown. I honestly do not have a solution for you or a location that is good for you. I feel bad of the situation, I do not know how I can help to move forward with this, but I do not believe that our downtown area is a viable place right now. I currently am seeing people use their vehicles out here in our current parking lot here for our upstairs residents as well as our business. And it fills up and they even pull off of power off of the city. Seriously, they just plug it in and they use our power. So I do not have a solution, but I do not believe that downtown is the safe place, thank you.
Thank you. Mike Forrester.
Hi. First of all, thanks for having us tonight, my name is Mike Forrester, I'm the Athletic Director at North Bend High School. I can give you my address if you need it, it's twenty-two ninety Lewis Street in North Bend. The, the thought of the of the campsite being placed over Clyde Allen does have some serious, bring up some serious concerns for me. My job as the Athletic Director here is to make sure that our students are safe, that good things are happening for them. And I want to make sure that, that you understand, I am very sympathetic to to the situation that, that some of the people without homes are in. It's a horrible situation and, and I do believe that as a community, we need to figure out some answers. But placing this, this site at Clyde Allen brings up a couple of concerns for me. Probably the biggest one is when our students get back from games at ten o'clock, twelve o'clock at night and they, they're going to have to walk through the parking lot of Clyde Allen, possibly pass people that are, that we, we have no, we have no idea who they are. And there's possibly going to be some situations where it's, it's not a healthy environment for our kids to be walking past, they can see things, come in contact with, with things or situations that are not going to be good for them. So I'm very concerned about that. I also have a concern about increased litter and vandalism. I've heard a lot of people talk about who's going to pick it up. You know, anytime, and, and this isn't just a situation that happens when people that don't have homes, you know, create. I think anytime there's large gatherings, there's the potential for increased litter and vandalism. I can tell you who will pick it up, it'll be the maintenance people at our school in our district that will be picking up the trash in the parking lot. And, and maybe it isn't their job. But if you knew the individuals that, that we have employed here and, and how much they care about our facilities, their care doesn't stop at the edge of Clyde Allen Field, their care and concern will stop all the way to the edge of the parking lot, they will clean up a mess if they see it. I probably shouldn't speak for them, but I just know them good enough to know that that's going to be a situation that
Thirty seconds.
Okay, that we're going to have to deal with. You know, and the vandalism, you know, they will be the ones that take care of that too. And our district, I don't believe will, will put money towards fixing things, but it'd be a concern. The final thing I would be, that I guess I would just want to, I don't need an answer from the council, but something I think you should take into consideration is if something were to happen to a student who was walking through the parking lot twelve o'clock at night, who's going to be liable for that? Who is going to be responsible to take care of, of something that may happen to one of our students? We're going to have a coach with them.
Go ahead and wrap it up.
Hoping that nothing happens to them, but it would be a concern if I was a parent of an athlete at North Bend High School and I've been the parent of three of them, I would be extremely concerned about my child being placed in an unsafe situation. So thanks again for your time and look forward to hopefully working with you in the future, thanks.
Thank you. Rick Simmons. Doesn't look like he's online any longer. Andrew Brainerd, did you wish to speak this evening?
No, thank you, my name is Andrew Brainerd, Confederate tribesman, just here to hear from the public, so thank you for your time.
Mark Ben Abraham.
Hi, how you doing? Let me see if I can find this, start video. Start my video, okay. Hi, I'm one of the founders of Blue Water Overwatch, I've already had a meeting with the mayor and the city manager. Three minutes is really not enough time to say what we got to say, I think people need to remember, number one, the city council and the mayor have an almost impossible job. And nothing they say, nothing they do is going to make everybody happy. And it's just the way it is. Our group can offer some relief, not a lot, I don't know what the what the outcome's going to be, and by the way, when I'm not in dry dock, I rent a room with Chesty, my dog, at sixty-seven eighty-four Ash Street, North Bend. And once the rest of the troops get here, we're going to buy a place in North Bend. The homeless are not something to be afraid of, they're, things happen, I was homeless myself and my brother Marina has the group in North Bend would understand this, I've been where he is. And we're not drug addicts, we're not alcoholics, just things happen. And that's just all there is to it, and we need to treat each other with dignity, respect. And just remember that this is nothing new, but the city council and the mayor are doing the best they can and they will do better if you help them. Instead of just criticizing, not giving good ideas. One of the things on board our boat that I found out is that there was a section that held radios and computers and things like that, and we're going to have a special area for at-risk people such as battered women, people that just need a special place to be where they can be safe. I have a son who's a Marine MP, a sergeant, he's a actually one of the, the watch commanders, everybody in our group except one person I know of was either federal law enforcement or was marine law enforcement. And we understand where you're coming from. But there's often times that the police department has their hands tied and it's because of the law, not because of them. And I relinquished the rest of my time, thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Gill.
I'm here.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, I'm Jennifer Gill, I live at twenty-one eighty-two Marion Street, right across the street from the VA clinic. I have a fourteen-year-old who plays at Clyde Allen, he's grown up playing ball at Ferry, at Boynton, at Airport Heights, and now plays at Clyde Allen. I also have a five-year-old who's growing up in this community and we've lived here since two thousand and four. I have seen what has been done to Ferry Road and how that ballpark has transformed into so many things and a lot of it has been taken away from the kids with flying frisbee coming out their heads. And my concern is, I'm also a board member for South Coast Bay Bruce and for North Bend Independent Baseball and a lot of things have been taken from the kids in this area. So to take all the hard work that not only the board put in at Clyde Allen, but also the high school putting in all of the time and money into that air field to make it something so special for this community to use and be proud of is just really heartbreaking. I have spent many nights at Clyde Allen in the concessions, being a scorekeeper and just being a parent and fan of our community ballplayers. To see it really be brought down to this is just mind-blowing. And I, I, it's not to say that I don't have a heart for the houseless, I was homeless, I was a fifteen-year-old pregnant teen, and so I know what it's like to be without a home, but to put something right smack in the middle of where children not only use the ball field, but that gorgeous soccer field that is now down there, it really just doesn't make sense to me. And for grown adults to take something again from children in this area, who will be future voters in this community, doesn't really sit well with me. And that's really all I have to say, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mindy Marco.
Hi. I, I really wasn't going to speak tonight, I didn't plan on it and I didn't realize that I signed up for it, to be honest with you. But there are a couple of things I'd like to say. First of all, thank you Mayor Engelke and the rest of your staff, thank you Tara Johnson. We have a beautiful community here and I believe that we can come to a solution, I really do. I've worked at Harry Ritchie's Jewelers going on twelve years now. My address is in Coos Bay, but I am employed in North Bend. One thing I'm very curious about is what is the timeframe for Blue Water? Because that sounds like a really great program and what wonderful people. Also, I, I wish this conversation was more about mental health and we could put our resources towards that. Because we have done and, and, and it's really strange to me that we don't. I'm a friend of Drew Farmer who has put a petition together and I believe this is our biggest need, truthfully. And really, that's all I have to say, but thank you all for this platform, it's, it's been really, really great. And I'd really like to know the timeline for Blue Water, thank you.
Thank you. Stan Wirt. Looks like he's jumped off. Gail O'Neil. Gail, did you want to speak this evening? Greg Brock.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Greg Brock, twenty-one forty-nine Union Avenue, North Bend, and I also have industrial property underneath the North Bend Bridge at seven forty Chappelle Parkway. And just, just, just a few comments, everybody's making great comments and everybody cares. Wise man once said it's a great time to be a bulldog, right? So the, the thing that I think is how did we get here and why is there so many homeless people more and more prevalent that we see, not just in North Bend and in a lot of cities? Also, just random notes here, I think that we still have some time with the state for a timeline of compliance. As far as Clyde Allen Ballpark, I think that's a very bad idea, it's only a half-acre parking lot, it's not very big and it serves an important role in our community and especially in a pandemic with our kids. And, and just mental health and the positive things with families that I just think that is a very bad place to, to try to solve this problem. So maybe right now, just being scattered along the streets maybe is our best avenue for now. I think also we should differentiate between homeless and possible, you know, criminal activity, our jail only houses thirty-five to forty people now. When it, when it can house more, if people need to, to do that, Shutter's Creek has been shut down. So it's not given a chance for families to heal. And, and so the criminal reform system, I think in the state, is suffering because it's not giving a chance for people to heal their families and be families put back together, which might help homeless situations if families are able to heal and be put back together. And also, are we really being disclosed the properties that are available in the city? A couple of properties that come into mind are the thirty-seven acres that are out by the railroad trestle. The city owns out there, might be a place out there, and yes, it would be under the bridge, but there is thirty-seven acres out there the city owns. And also in Pony Slough, there's a dozen acres or so that are around the Newmark Avenue Pony Slough area. And I don't think it should be a city issue, I think the state and county should bear some of this, you know, like the North Spit or, or things in the state, North Bend is basically an island and we just have limited resources, but definitely I think we should look at our kids first and their mental health and, and not, not go to Clyde Allen. And that's all I have to say, and thank you, everybody, everybody makes good points, it's a very tough situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Adams. Susan Adams, did you wish to speak this evening?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. Brenda Gardner.
Hi there.
Do you state your name and address for the record, please? Sorry about that, Brenda. There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, did you hear my address?
It did not.
Okay, it's nineteen thirty Maple Street, North Bend.
Thank you.
Um, first of all, I just want to say, um, I don't know what the solution is. I, I feel for the people that have to make these decisions ultimately. But I just wanted to state that I do oppose the homeless camp, to be put at Clyde Allen. I agree with Brad in his comment about the fly balls. Big, big issue for the homeless that would be there. When there are baseball games, the fly balls go all in that parking lot. And it just seems really unfair to accommodate one group by pushing out all the other community groups and members that use a space, like the baseball players and the soccer players and families and out-of-town. And I don't know how much is looked into to get a grant for acquiring their own special space without pushing out other groups. And no one's really worked out the plan for, you know, the trash pickup, like Mike said, the sanitation, patrolling it. You know, who's going to be in charge of that if you do use a community space? Because the community members, you know, they're people too. I know the homeless are people too. One of my son's best friends is homeless right now. But they work hard for what they have to, and they expect a certain level of safety in their neighborhoods. And so I, I don't know what the answer is or what other properties could be used. But I know using where kids, kids are, and there's not really a plan set for cleanup, and all of that is not the solution. So that's all.
Thank you. Julie Nevdahl. Julie Nevdahl. Ken Benetti.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, yes, my name's Ken Benetti. I'm at nineteen ninety-seven Oak Street. And I'm new to town. I just moved here in September, retired from a job at the University of Colorado in Boulder. And I just wanted to say that I, I'm encouraged somewhat by what I've been hearing. Little bit of enviousm, but not that much. Some good reasons why some places shouldn't be used and so forth. But I, I just hope that the the city does not do what Boulder, Colorado does, which is try to sweep them under the rug and leave them vulnerable to the elements. There, it's much colder, and every winter, many homeless folks die from exposure and so forth. And we don't want to see that. I don't have solutions because I don't know this town very well. But I would encourage the city to work with every other entity in the area, county, Coos Bay, the airport authority, whatever, to find a solution. One question I do have is, is the city really considering using the airport property to house the homeless? Is, can anybody answer that, or is that something we don't do on this format?
Right now, that is, the airport has made it very clear that they will not allow homeless on their property, and that is not city property, so that is not an option at this point.
Yeah, I, I didn't think it really was, but the airport seemed to be, authorities seemed to be using that as a reason to justify logging of the entire airport property and surrounding it with a perimeter fence. And we find that would be as damaging or even more damaging than to this neighborhood than homeless folks staying in, in the neighborhood. We want to just make it, want it to be clear to the airport district that that is not an option, and therefore that that reason to log the entire property and surround it by a fence is not really viable. So that, that's an important consideration for us here in Airport Heights. But I, yeah, sure, I, I just want to encourage you all to work together and look for solutions. It's not going to go away, and it's probably going to take multi-layered solution. And one thing I would suggest is employing homeless people to help clean up the city and help maintain clean areas around themselves and elsewhere, like over by Pony Slough and so forth, where the trash tends to blow. So thank you for this opportunity to speak. I really appreciate it, and I'm glad you're having the session. I hope to see more of these in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Adams, it looks like you have unmuted. Are you ready to speak?
Oh, no, I just didn't know I unmuted it. I'm just, I'm just observing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There are a couple more on the list, and then we'll go back to see if I missed anybody. Allison Richards, did you wish to speak this evening?
I'm just listening in this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Cameron Stringfield.
Uh, yeah, I did want to speak this evening.
All right. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, yeah, my name is Cameron Stringfield. I don't necessarily feel comfortable giving my address, but I live in Coos Bay.
Thank you.
I wanted to comment because a lot of what I've heard tonight is some decent discourse. But one solution that I don't hear from a lot of the people that are making these comments or from a city is public housing. You know, a solution to homelessness is to make them not homeless. And I think that things like these camps or, you know, just pushing them from one location to another. And it sounds like a lot of these locations are sea level, so that doesn't sound tenable anyway. These aren't tenable solutions. These, it's not a housing solution. I think that for city governments not to prioritize housing their houseless, it's frankly disgusting. And I think that one way, you know, we can avoid any other concerns about the ballpark parking lot not being safe or, you know, there not being enough space in other locations for homeless is to look at the, the houses that are empty, not being used, and use them. Of course, I don't know the details of that, but that's something that I think that the North Bend City Government should really put some emphasis into. You know, I'll just say camps aren't housing, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone tonight that wishes to speak that has not spoken yet? Again, if you wish to speak and have not spoken yet tonight, could you raise your hand? Madam Mayor, not seeing any takers, I send it back to you.
All right, thank you. And you're, Kaylee, my, my audio is working again, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So that was great to hear all the people that are participating and that gave comments. And we are going to now, I think there might be, I was trying to make a list of a few things that we could address. And I know our city administrator is still online here, and also our police chief. Chief McCullough, is he here with us as well?
Yes, I am there.
Okay, hi, Chief McCullough. One of the things that I wanted to address, there was a comment about the RVs and that, why are they part of the law? And I think it was the, the person who was speaking was wondering why, how that plays into effect that we're not able to, or that we are supposed to make sure that there is room for people to be camping currently, that the way that the law is written.
Well, it just kind of falls, falls into the, the rest of it. To where you're kind of restricted on moving people off of, I mean, that are in RVs specifically, that's the biggest challenge is, is one that, that's some person's home with all their belongings. They're, you know, by ordinance and state statute, they're, they can be on the street for a seventy-two-hour period before they have to move. And, you know, that's kind of the, the direction we're taking now is trying to encourage them to, to, you know, move to another location. Whether that's on a, on a public street, I mean, that's kind of the options we have right now. If they refuse to move, and then, you know, after, after the seventy-two-hour period, then we can put a intent-to-toe sticker on and, you know, and after a ten-day waiting period, then if they're still there, then we can take the steps to have them towed, towed away. But once we take possession, you know, by state law, once we take possession of somebody's property, i.e. their, their RV park, then the city is on, on the hook for, I guess, lack of better terms, for, to store that motorhome for a thirty-day period, which encourages, you know, daily storage costs and, and whatnot. So it's a, it's quite an expensive venture once you start down that road.
Maybe Mr. Milliron can kind of jump in here, because I, and one of the comments somebody had made is that, you know, we do have time, the state mandate, we don't have to update the ordinance until 2023. But if we don't, I think it's very important for everybody who's listening to understand that it reverts to the state law. So if we don't have the ordinance now to say time, place, and manner, we're really opening it up to public lands for the camping. And I think that was one of the questions, is could somebody define the public lands? So we're talking about right-of-way sidewalks, et cetera.
Absolutely. So earlier in the discussion, we shared with what I believe the gentleman said was a rather confusing definition put out by the state of what public property constitutes. And so in the state law, it is all public lands, premises, and buildings, including but not limited to buildings used in connection with the transaction of public business or any lands, premises, or buildings owned or leased by the state or any public subdivision thereof. What, in simple terms, that your public parking lots, that's all of your streets. Most folks do not realize that in front of their home, there is public right-of-way or let's say that you have a public easement, utility easement. Those are open to public parking. And so the chief is right. Right now, we do engage, we try to get them to move after seventy-two hours. And until, you know, we, you really, as a council, can do nothing, which means all public lands in the city are sort of open game, if you will, for camping. Or you can regulate it to specific streets, specific locations. And you have until July of next year to update those ordinances. What's hurting with the police department is until we update our camping ordinance and our towing ordinance, they lack some teeth to take, you know, some appropriate measure. Meaning, for instance, if you ask one of our police officers, "Well, where can I go?" Well, the reality is, right now, we tell them, "Any public street in the city of North Bend, just move every three days." That's not what we really want to tell them, but it's what we have to tell them.
Another question, I did have somebody ask me, since it's, we're talking about public lands, how does that play into for a school parking lots? If we don't do something, are we subjecting them to be open to campers starting to park there unless we have this ordinance?
So we, we've tried to be good stewards and good partners to our other local governments. So we have never tried to suggest a school parking lot as a potential. I know our Public Works Director is on here. He has looked at the ordinance, frontwards, backwards, and sideways. I know that hidden down in the code was, was some reference to public parks. Ralph, if you want to buzz in, have you seen any exclusion to schools which otherwise weren't open to the public?
David, I haven't. School district property is not expressly prohibited, at least in my reading. It has just not been a consideration on our behalf because of the children present in that type of thing, but it's not expressly prohibited in any means. It's still public property.
And so if, am I correct in saying in our ordinance, it was our goal to exempt school property?
Correct.
Please, I don't want anybody to think I was suggesting that. It was just a question that somebody asked if it was vulnerable, and I, and I would ask.
Yeah, I, I, I'm well aware, and, and, you know, for the benefit of the public, you know, I see there's a hundred and fourteen watching. I've seen as many as a hundred and fifty-plus watching. I, I, I go out with the police department. I do engage with one-on-one with the homeless in our community. You know, they have access to social media, smartphones. They watch these sessions. They quote back to me ordinances of, of our city code. And so we've, we've been very, very vigilant, never to mention any school parking facilities, lots, things of that nature. And, and we have written into our draft ordinance that they would be excluded from public parking in the city limits, and I believe Coos Bay did the same thing.
And Mr. Milliron, there was also a question. Somebody had mentioned about some acreage that they thought that North Bend owned down by the tide pools.
I mean, there is some land that the city does own. So let me share my screen so that the public can see what we're talking about here. This land here, right here, is actually fifty-eight acres, and we own the adjacent here. As you can see, all of that land is right adjacent to the railroad, and it's in the tide pool. And for instance, yesterday, the Public Works Director will tell you, this, this space here actually drops off, meaning if someone pushed me, I would roll all the way downhill. That, that's how much of an incline it is. But it, as of yesterday, for instance, it was all underwater. So we do not own any of the other land. We own the Ferry Park area here, which is sixteen point two-four acres. And then we have this very little slice here, seven point two, that goes under the bridge. This is Pittam Loop. You see the state right-of-way here, which is actually pretty extensive on both sides. So once you get well past the bridge and you're over here, coming in back into the subdivision, that is the only land over there that we actually own.
Thank you. Thank you for putting up that map, actually. Can you, are you able to zoom out a little bit so we can see all of North Bend? Just a little bit. And I actually, I think this is a really good visual aid as we, I know we're getting a little bit limited on time, and we only have the floor till nine PM tonight. But, you know, for the benefit of the public who's watching, you can see why this is quite the dilemma when you look at this map. And we're trying to set an ordinance to follow the mandate. You just don't have a space that doesn't touch either a business or residential area. We are not as fortunate as some communities to have some industrial area. I think that was why it was so easy for Coos Bay to set their ordinance sooner than us because they had some industrial areas. Our kind of industrial area would be around the airports, and the city gave up that property many years ago. So I have spent a lot of time staring at this map, keep thinking that something is going to magically pop up that would be a good solution, and it's been really difficult to find that. One other thing that I was going to clear up, and then I'll go to the counselors, is a lot of questions tonight when people were, obviously, there's some concern that we were a lot of questions tonight, um, when, um, people were, obviously there's some concern that we were looking at the potential parking lot of um, the, uh, community center and, uh, questions about, you know, who would clean it up? We hadn't even got further than a discussion on that. So that's why there's whatever we decide in our ordinance, we will have information in there about the time at night, we're not looking to set up necessarily a camp right now, we're looking at to, uh, see where we can allow this overnight camping. Um, and, you know, it could be from a certain time at night to in the morning. And then within that ordinance, we would also be looking at how that would be maintained. So that's something to think about for the future. We're still in discussion phase tonight and I'm anxious to, um, unless you had something else, um, Mr. City Administrator, um, to go to the counselors and see if they have anything that they would like to add.
Well, from the, uh, staff standpoint, obviously, uh, we have to address, um, the policies of, of the council. So yes, we, we know that, um, if that was a site that was decided upon and selected, uh, it would be fenced in. Uh, we know that, uh, we, we know how many, uh, parking spaces are in there. Uh, and we know, um, in talking to, uh, our, uh, fire chief, um, and police chief, um, we know what ingress egress has to occur. Uh, we know that there would be security cameras there, we know that there's already sanitation there. I know that one council has asked about potentially, uh, you know, if that was the location obtained a FEMA bathroom slash, uh, shower uh, facility that could be on site. Uh, we also know that, uh, we have contracts with, um, security now that actually um, opens up and closes all of our parks. They would be responsible for opening and physically closing. And then the council has, um, provided, uh, funding for a committee, a resource officer. That officer would be the officer that would be, uh, responsible for making sure that, um, addressing any issues in there. And also then collaboratively, uh, working with our park staff to make sure that the facility is, uh, cleaned out every morning. And, um, as someone had said earlier, there are volunteers, um, there are multiple volunteers. Um, a, a number of these folks that are in RVs actually volunteer at the Deveraux Center. Um, and, uh, it's actually pretty elaborate, they, they've actually gone in with us and cleaned up a couple of the, uh, homeless camps that, uh, uh, the chief and, uh, his, uh, staff have helped, uh, um, that sort of dispersed, if you will. And, uh, I, I was actually, um, amazed at how sophisticated, how organized they are, um, and how they actually even take the dumps to, um, uh, the transfer station. Now, I'm not going to be naive, um, because as a city manager, uh, I'm the first to say, I can also then take you on tours of all of the other side of the feds. Um, you know, where once they're hidden out of sight, go through Pittam Loop, look at how often, um, our park crews have to clean up the camps there. Um, some of the wooded areas where our fire departments are responding, um, to, uh, warming fires, um, that shouldn't be occurring. Um, so, um, uh, unless we regulate a solution somewhere, um, then it's going to be sporadic and we're going to continue as we are, which is, um, uh, running after various calls. Um, so I'm pretty confident that the community will come up with a solution. Um, we still have to, uh, find what that ideal solution is.
Thank you. Um, so as I mentioned, we have the floor till nine PM. Um, let's go ahead and I'd like to just see if the counselors have anything to say, I mean, this is we treat this similar to a work session, we're not looking to make a decision tonight or to vote on anything. Um, but, um, in the next twenty-five minutes, I think we would like to give the, um, staff some direction on, on where to go next. So I think I see Eric, uh, or Mr. Counselor Gleason. Um, did you have any comments?
Um, I guess, thank you, uh, everybody that, that took the time to, to come out and, and speak. For those of you that don't know about me, I, I grew up here, I played a number of baseball games at Clyde Allen. Uh, I don't necessarily like the idea of it being there either, but I also struggled with housing after, um, my eight years in the Navy. And, and after sitting here, I've listened to some really terrible stereotyping of a very terrible situation. And it's really saddened me sitting here, listening to this. What I hear is not in my backyard, not with my tax dollars, uh, translating more to not in my city, um, but I empathize just enough to recall you if you do something I don't like. Uh, so basically a blimp or an aircraft carrier is kind of what I've come up with, uh, because then that's not by anybody's house. Because the I don't want to see them group is pretty clear about not wanting them anywhere near, um, anywhere that they can be seen. So we have to find an option and then understand that in typical fashion, we're not going to get any help with it, but expected to fasten a solution like getting blood out of a turnip. And I would be interested in the discussion with the Blue Water Overwatch folks, having lived on a destroyer. Uh, myself, understanding what, uh, what it's like to live on a small boy, on a small ship. And understanding the, uh, the issues that I could foresee with that as a homeless solution, but I like the idea because you brought something to the table and I appreciate that and I would really like to sit down and talk with them, I think, a little bit more. But there isn't a really good situation and I think as a council, we're going to have to find what is doable and, uh, and, and make that work. However, I am excited to know that midnight soccer and baseball is an option, it's opened up my, uh, my evening plans as, as recreation. So that's cool, I'm excited about that.
Thank you, Counselor Gleason. Um, do we still have online counselor, uh, Council President Richardson?
I am here. First, I'd like to thank everybody for speaking, this is, uh, the way that we keep the problem solved. I think that this is an ongoing problem, it's not new to our area, it's not new to anybody, um. And we're just looking for options right now. Um, that's why we've taken the time and not tried to draft an ordinance. I think we're looking at all options. You know, obviously there's, there's some pretty passionate people about Clyde Allen, I, I understand that completely. That's just one option. Even if it is an option, it may not be an option. But we have to find something that's going to at least be temporary and in the long run be permanent and, and try to find these people that truly need the help and get them the help. The ones that want it, there are certain amount of people that don't want anybody telling them what to do, I understand that too. And there's people that don't know how to seek help. And I think it's up to all of us as a community to, you know, dig a little deeper and, you know, find that, you know, compassion and be mindful of, of, of other human beings. I think that that's, that's very difficult, especially in these times, everybody is on edge about everything, nobody's for sure about, you know, their work or where they live or anything. And we're just trying as a group to try to put together the best possible answer to a, to an impossible problem. And, uh, we, we encourage the information that we're getting. Tonight, you know, there was some, some pretty harsh words said. But also there were some pretty compassionate people out there that, that, that are willing to help and, and we encourage that through our work sessions, through phone calls, through emails, we're, we're all available and, and, and we're all listening and we want to make sure that that, you know, we come out with the best possible solution to this, you know, ever deepening problem. That's really all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I see if we have Counselor Nordoff. And I think we've got you on mute, but you should be able to unmute yourself. I don't think we've got you off mute yet.
Counselor Nordoff, if you had pressed the space bar, should unmute you.
Kaylee, are we still having problems with her volume?
Yeah, Counselor Nordoff, you're still on mute, can you hit the space bar or scroll down to the bottom left-hand corner of your screen?
There we go.
All right, can you hear me now? Great, all right, thank you, sorry, um, appreciate your patience. And I think that, um, Clyde Allen Field should be taken off the option table personally. Uh, I also would like to refer to House Bill thirty fifteen and there's a definition here or a, a point here, point number three, any city or county law that regulates the acts of sitting, lying, sleeping or keeping warm and dry outdoors on public property that is open to the public must be objectively reasonable as to time, place and manner with regards to persons experiencing homelessness. And I want to stress that, that it says outdoors. And in my mind, that does not include people living in their RVs. Um, and so I would like the city to focus on people. I think the RV problem is a separate problem, we know that an RV can be in place on a city street for in the same location for only seventy-two hours. And that does not allow an extension cord from a house to the RV to, um, p- provide power. That's not allowed, ditto with providing water. So they have to be self-sufficient, they can be in one location for three days and then they have to move. So I think that the city should focus with its ordinance on discouraging camping by people other than in RVs on and, and, um, focus on keeping directing those people toward appropriate locations. And that would be out of parks, out of residential zones, um, off-city properties such as, um, the parking lot and back of the community center. And specifically figure out other locations and we've run through several of those tonight. One thought that comes to mind is, excuse me, the Cold Bank Village that was a partnership between the city of Kuzbay and the Deveraux Center. Now, the Deveraux Center is located within the city limits of Kuzbay, however, that does not say that they could not be, form a partnership with the city of North Bend and provide something similar to the, the little cold bank village which allows people uh, to be close to s- some services to be able to lock up their buildings and be able to lock the door at night so they feel secure. And one location that, that might be possible is one of the parking lots that we acquired when we bought the, the North Bend Annex, um, bought by the Urban Renewal District. Um, we have two parking lots, they are, one of them is fenced, one of them is not. We could arrange fencing, we could arrange screening. And possibly if not partnering with the Deveraux Center, possibly partnering with another nonprofit. So those are my thoughts, um. And I, I do think that we need to pass an ordinance sooner rather than later, and we all know that we can amend ordinances. But I think, I think it, it, we do need to differentiate between people living in RVs, I think that should not be our focus, I understand that it's a problem. But that is not, I, I don't believe based on the laws that have been passed that that is what the, the, um, Ninth Circuit and the, the, um, the city, the state law that has come as a result of that legal decision. I do not think that the intent is to, um, focus on RVs and people living in RVs. The intent is homeless. RVs have kitchens, RVs have bathrooms, that is not being homeless. So that's, that's my point, I will leave it there.
Thank, thank you, Counselor Nordoff. I think we still have the, um, Chief Police, the, um, Chief of Police, McCullough on here as well, and I'm going to refer back to him on, on the, the comment again about the RVs, why is this being, um, discussed and, and part of the ordinance?
As far, uh, I, I didn't catch some of that.
So, so the question came out, um, Counselor Nordoff was reading part of the, or trying to interpret some of the law um, and had some questions about why are we discussing, um, the fact that, um, we're allowing, we're considering allowing RVs to camp as part of the ordinance. So when we're going through the mandates, um, is there a piece in there, um, that specifically states about how we cannot do with people's, um, individuals' property? Um, is that why this has kind of become part of the conversation?
No, there's nothing that, that differentiates between, I mean, what homeless is, whether they're in an RV or not, I don't believe that, um, it specifically addresses whether they're in a, in a, you know, a tent situation or if they're in an RV, they still don't have a, a location that they can can put that, um, that RV unless it's, you know, obviously a, a newer model and they can get into an RV park, which is still, um, you know, very expensive, um. That's, uh, is, is far, you know, there's, I don't believe that it does that differentiate between the two, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Madam Mayor? Yes, um, I, I am only going to point out that it says people living outdoors and RVs are not outdoors. And RVs can go to campgrounds. And RVs can go parked by the side of the road out on Highway one oh one, north of any city limit. Uh, it is not the the homeless population that House Bill thirty-one fifteen and the the other House Bill, I think it's thirty-four fifteen, are designed to address, and that is our mandate, not people living in RVs. And it'll be a more manageable problem if we don't take on both.
Yeah, thank you, we'll definitely have our city attorney follow up on that, appreciated.
Sounds good.
Okay, Counselor Goll, we've got you online, are you able to unmute yourself and, um, we are going to want to try to wrap up here in the next ten minutes, but I want to hear from um, the other counselors online and then give our staff some direction on where to go, what to do next. So Counselor Goll.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, yes, you are.
Well, man, that was, that was shit-house luck, I think. Uh, anyway, I, uh, here's, here's Suzanne, I kind of took my, uh, my, uh, um, pride there, I, that, that's exactly the points I was going to bring up is, is if if we could, uh, enforce the ordinance we have already and maybe put some more teeth into it when we write our main ordinance for this homeless problem and we can, we could take, uh, our mindset as being somebody in a, a motorhome or a trailer isn't homeless and yet is not paying property taxes in North Bend, that we uh, kind of gruesome out of town and, uh, just like, uh, Suzanne had said, you know, they could park out at, uh, on Trans-Pacific or they could park somewhere else. Uh, they're probably not, you know, not contributing much to the city of North Bend. And that would get us in the mindset of, in which I agree with. The mindset of just trying to take care of these people, you know, sitting outside of McDonald's or sitting outside of of, uh, Walmart or something, begging for money and, and those are probably the people that that this deal is intended to take care of. And, and I would think if we put enough teeth in our, in our, whatever we write for, uh, ordinance to, to kind of take that camper, take that, uh, motorhome out of, out of the element, uh, and just let's focus on the uh, nowhere near four hundred people standing on the street. Uh, you know, I, I, I think, I think, and I, I'm not real sure who owns the property and but the seventeen hu- seventeen hundred block of Hamilton, uh, from Don Thompson's shop to the bus barn, say, if a guy could clean that if a guy could clean that sidewalk, the east side of the street, the Goldfolds Homes on the other side of the street, you can clean that east side of that street up. And even if you had to build, you know, and I volunteer to help build it, to build a deck that can levered out towards the bay, kept them out of the water. And if you had to divide it off and have something similar to what Coos Bay got there at Chambers, I think we could, I think we could do something right there. And, and I'm sad to say I haven't looked to see really who owns that property. But everything from Don Thompson Shop to the to the bus barn, basically, Don Thompson Shop to the south on the east side of seventeen hundred block of Hamilton. I, I, I really think, I know that thing over there at Chambers isn't that big. And we could have something very similar that really, in my opinion, fairly inexpensive. And we would be providing actual safe, out of sight, out of mind, basically, places for these, these non-four hundred. I ain't buying the four hundred people standing on the street. But the nucleus of the people that we need to help, I think we can do even right there. So twofold is what I got to go on is to put enough teeth in there in the ordinance. We already have an ordinance against motor homes and campers. We already have that in place. But if we can write that and teething it up a little bit into the new ordinance that we write, if we, if we took the motor home and trailer component out of what we're talking, it's going to ease us, ease our job up immensely. So Suzanne, I don't always agree with you, but I'm kind of on your side on this one. So.
Thank you.
All right, all right. That's all I got.
Thank you, Counselor Goll. I know we have Counselor Garboden still online, but I don't think he had any comments unless I'm missing something, Counselor Garboden. I don't think he had anything to add right now. Did I get all the councilors that are online? Sure, we've still got our city recorder out there too. Did I miss anyone, Kaylee?
Counselor Garboden had to go.
Okay. Thank you. I do see two hands raised. So I wasn't sure if we, if you guys, is it, Thomas is still online? If we, if just, if you wanted to take just a couple minutes here, we've got to wind down before the nine o'clock hour and we still need to get our, give our staff, the councilors need to give the staff some direction. So if you want to just take a minute or two, real quick.
You, Mayor, just from the legal perspective of things, I think the clarity around what the intention of camping would provide the council the necessary guidance. It would also allow guidance around the existing ordinance and whether or not that should stay at seventy-two.
Oops, you just muted yourself.
Sorry, I don't know where you cut, where I cut off. I think the clarity around what the intent is in the law and in the Ninth Circuit's ruling would provide the council and the staff with the direction necessary to make an ordinance effective. I think it would also give the council the ability to analyze the existing ordinance for trailers and campers, which is set at seventy-two hours, and whether or not that should be adjusted to a different amount of time to do. The chief makes a valid point of what to do with those structures and the cost associated with that. But I think there's some clarity around the Circuit's ruling decision along with the House bills that came out that would provide the council with the necessary guidance to proceed forward with the ordinance. So I would encourage that.
Yes, thank you. Both Counselor Nordoff and Goll, recent good questions, and I think we can get those answered pretty quickly. I'm pretty sure the intent was to include the RVs, but I, but we need to double check on that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So, staff, not only our staff, the county staff, Coos Bay staff collectively have been working on a draft ordinance and the interpretations and the intent of this law. I appreciate Counselor Nordoff's comments. However, our draft ordinance was drafted in cooperation with our district attorney, Paul Frazier, who actually worked with us on interpretations of the law, RVs, camping, urban camping, et cetera. And so that collectively is why you see a revised draft camping ordinance while also at the same time a parking ordinance. So we've gotten good guidance from the League of Cities on this issue, and we feel very confident that our draft ordinance is in line with the intent of the federal case law and also the intent of the two state laws.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I believe the next item on the agenda is to look at our next steps and the direction for the city administrator and his staff. Counselor Gleason, since you went first, would you like to go first at offering some next steps and directions?
Definitely think we need to clarify what we're trying to address as far as who falls into what. I'm in a trailer right now and it's friggin' cold and I've got a little fireplace going. So I know that being in a trailer doesn't mean you're warm. But I think ultimately we have to figure out what are non-starters as far as location and then what possibly has some legs. We're not going to make everybody happy. Every solution that we're going to come up with is going to piss somebody off. And I think we just have to figure out what's going to be the less of the evils that we've got.
Thank you. I'm glad that you mentioned that because I, maybe I can kind of streamline this a little bit. It did, we did hear from quite a few people who were opposing the potential parking lot at the community center. So we were looking at some of the next best options. We could give the city staff directions to start looking at maybe several other locations, some of the empty parking lots that we have across from the Annex. But I want the councilors to be prepared, as soon as we mention these publicly, your inbox will be inundated tomorrow from the businesses around those. And we talked about at the end of Hamilton over by the bus barn. I agree, that could be a potential solution too. But then there will be another meeting with a petition from the group of people around that neighborhood and that apartment and those businesses. So just please keep in mind that as we brought up the map earlier, there is no good place in town to just have a camp. But we do, you know, we have a couple of things here. We have an ordinance that we need to set up that's mandated from the state, and we need to be good humans and take care of the citizens around our community. So we have to figure out a way to find the balance of that. So how would the council feel if we asked the staff to go kind of back to the drawing board and identify some potential streets? The Hamilton was mentioned tonight. A few of the empty parking lots were mentioned tonight over by, across from the Annex. I know there's a lot of the downtown businesses, and there's a few that spoke tonight that very opposed anything down by the water. But that's kind of where I'm thinking that the next step is to look at what a potential solution would look like if we didn't have it all in one area. But we also face, you know, the downfall of that is we want to make sure we're setting the police chief up and the group that's going to be checking, sort of, sort of checking people in and out in the morning. How difficult, we don't want to make it that difficult on them because there's going to be cleanup involved potentially. So it would still need to be somewhat of a concentrated area so that services could be provided to those individuals. So how, so the council, how do you feel if we, if we give some direction to the staff to sort of start looking at another option of a few different streets? I see a thumbs up from Counselor Gleason. Counselor Richardson and Counselor Nordoff, should we go ahead and give direction to the staff to look at some of these individual streets?
Counselor Richardson, you go first.
He gave a thumbs up, I think.
Oh, all right then. I think that would be appropriate. I think that it, it would be worth considering a partnership with a nonprofit to try to look at modular housing like the Coal Bank Village, something that takes the need to camp out in, under the trees, provides an option. And I think the quicker we get an ordinance, better.
And I, I like the way that some other people have also mentioned that this is going to be a layered approach. So what we're looking at right now is some sort of ordinance that can be changed, but it does help alleviate from, we had online earlier tonight, I think it was Mr. Benton. If he's still here, you know, he was, he was seeing people pile up in front of his residential streets. A few others spoke to that as well. So that, so that the ordinance with maybe the use of some of these parking lots will be able to alleviate some of the issues that we're having in the residential area.
I agree. And there was one, there was one family that spoke about Oak Street Park. And I know that it was in the Parks Master Plan to get some overhead lighting down there, and I'm not sure that has been done. And I really do think that needs to get done. So that that area is more secure, because I've heard from more than one person about illegal activity at Oak Street Park in the nighttime hours.
So all the, all the people who are watching tonight and the citizens that are involved, it's important for them to know and help us share out this information that any discussion that we have right now, no decision is being made. We're still looking at some of these potential streets. These are all things that would need to be worked out. And even if we do come to an ordinance, these could be something that we move on.
Am I still unmuted or?
Yes, Counselor Goll, I can still hear you.
I knew you were going to get ready to ask me what I said. Anyway, yeah, I just want to go on the record, just, and I've already been on the record several times, you know, against the IWA, all the community center, Clyde Allen parking lot deal. I, I, I really, I really believe that if we can narrow our problem down, it's going to be easier to fix. So if there is a way to write a toothy deal to get, to get rid of our motor home problems, I mean, I've got two of them sitting across the street from me right now. One of them came from when they cleaned the church out and just ended up across the street from me, and it's been there ever since. They tagged it and the guy ripped the tag off. So that's, that's the way he feels about his scenario. But and, and I'm just dealing with it, you know, and to a certain point, you know, the citizens of North Bend, you know, at times are going to have to deal with some of this, you know. And that's why I believe if a guy could pull, you know, if a guy could pull a deal off there on, on Hamilton Street, and I might be speaking completely out of turn, but that's pretty much out of sight and out of mind. And if we could get you know, a deck scenario with some of them round, little round houses sitting on them or something, and we had, you know, fifteen of them there in that block, I would say we've done, the City of North Bend's done a pretty good deal towards the homeless problem. So that's just my thought, that to keep it simple, out of harm's way, easily accessed and and, and get, get something done and then we're done. So that's, that's all I got. I, I've, I've been against this Clyde Allen thing ever since it got brought up and and I, I like to think that we always get on the same track and, and we do most of the time, but I'm sorry, I wasn't on this track. So I apologize for that, but I, I don't believe that was the right spot. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Counselor Goll. And I think that I can, I think I can speak for all of the councilors and the staff that we do want to figure out a way to help people. And so that's, we're all on the same page there. So I see, I think our city administrator has his hand up and unless that was a mistake. And I will go ahead and call in one more person. Elizabeth, did you have one more comment? And then we can have our city administrator close the meeting.
Yeah, I just said, I really liked the, I want to make the city, I think the city manager was behind this, the survey that was sent out. I think the next good step after you guys, the city goes back and the staff goes back and looks at their locations, is to set out another thing like that. You got a huge response. I think you will get another really huge response, and then you can kind of see what people are thinking about the different options. That is my suggestion.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Millar, and before we close the town hall tonight, was there anything else that you wanted to add?
Just a couple of clarifications, and then one other statement, our public park director says that Counselor Nordoff may be mistaken. She may be referring to College Park, not Oak Street. He says Oak Street's over by his house and is undeveloped. Oak Street Park's, you know, obviously an alternative. It's all residential. So the naming of the park and the locations is one thing. But, but taking councilors, Nordoffs, and Golls' comments, sometimes, you know, you, you run through listening to folks. And there may be another approach. There's always another approach. One approach may be we focus on working with, say, the Deveraux Center on the equivalent of a Coal Bank Village in North Bend. And then we allow the ordinance to move forward. But that would mean that, you know, campers would still be able to be parked on the street, but they'd be amenable to the seventy-two hours, the no outside flame, you know, the no sanitation, they'd have to be operational, they'd have to be registered, all of that that's in the ordinance. The downside is, and I don't think the public realizes this, is that we have networks that are actually driving campers and, and towing them around the city and then leaving them until someone complains and moves on. And so we've been dealing with that issue as well. These are not all, excuse me, they are not all RVs. And they are not all towables. And in some cases, they are urban campers. But our ordinance aggressively addresses that. And so it would be a lot easier to find a location the size of a Coal Bank Village. But, you know, certainly not in an industrial area, but could be fenced in in an area where it could be a little bit out of the way. So staff will look at it from that approach as well. And then come back to you at a future work session. With that said, Madam Mayor, it's nine ten, and you've exceeded your time by ten minutes, which is your executive privilege. But we told your governing body and the public that this would go from six to nine. So back to you.
All right. Well, thank you. I think that was a very good use of using my executive privilege to go past the three hours. So again, I think everybody participated tonight. I see some of you stayed on the whole three hours plus. This is how we get things done in a community. And so, so stay tuned for more detail. Help us get out the facts. That's probably one of the biggest things is we need people to understand where this is coming from, what the law is. The slides that you shared, Mr. Millar, is that something that we could make accessible for people on the, maybe on our city website? We can make sure that.
They are already on the site. They were posted about an hour ahead of tonight's session. So if they actually go to our main site for this particular meeting, click on it, they'll see those links.
All right, thank you. So share the facts, share the information, and we will stay tuned for more information. So we'll go ahead and adjourn the town. we'll go ahead and adjourn the town meeting, and I wish you all a very good night.